Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, May 10. We're going to begin this evening's meeting and turn into an executive session. We will be resuming open session thereafter, hopefully around 6:30 PM. So if I could have a motion, please?
I will move that the Board of Select will invoke pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as the Chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the negotiating position of the public party.
Thank you, and the Chair does so declare, and so we have a motion on the second. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, so we will now enter into executive session, and we will be back, open session, around 6:30 this evening. Thank you. Excellent. Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, May 10, 2021. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance? So we're going to begin tonight's meeting with organization, the annual election of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. That will be followed by Department Board updates and requests. We have the Conservation Commission, 119 Tehadawon demolition permit and award of contract. The Department of Public Works approve a grant application to the Mass DOT Shared Streets Program for Newtown Road sidewalk extension and pedestrian crossing. Elder and Human Services accept donations. Planning Board submission of preliminary determination of eligibility application to DHCD. That will be followed by public input and members' updates. At 7:05, we have appointments. Actually, it's the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to revoke the appointment of David Demuth. That will be followed by a joint meeting with the Personnel Committee to discuss the personnel bylaw amendments. At 7:30, the Select Board will have a discussion about the town website and some website improvements. That will be followed by annual town meeting warrant for June 12, 2021. Voter petition article, declare Littleton Pollinator Friendly Community. Article 23, adjusted income and asset limits for tax abatements. See, determine order in which articles appear, direct posting, and then adopt recommendations on articles. That will be followed by the Town Administrator Assistant Town Administrator update. We have an update on the Neshoba Valley Regional Vaccine Clinic, an acquisition of property, the Cooper Farmhouse Host Community Agreement. And then at 8:00 PM, the Select Board will review and approve minutes from June 26, 2021, and our meeting is anticipated to be adjourned at 8:05 PM this evening. So, to begin, I would like to congratulate Mr. DeCoste on his reelection to the Select Board. Good to have you still with us and here. And I want to actually thank all the residents that came out and voted Saturday. It was a very high voter participation this year. It was really great to see the community involved in coming out to cast their vote for the candidates, and I'd like to thank all the candidates who came forward and ran for election, as well as the candidates that came forward and ran unopposed. Thank you for your service and continued dedication to our community. So, to begin, the Select Board does this annually. After every election, we reorganize as a board for the positions of Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. One of the things that I wanted to propose to the Board for this process this evening is going through this process, but maybe deterring the actual reorganization till after-town meeting, just because we do have a lot of articles on the warrant this year. And it might just be easier if we kept, we can do the election this evening, but still keep our positions until a date certain after, what's town meeting, June 12?
Yeah.
Yeah, until after that. So I wanted to see what, how the Board felt about that proposal.
That sounds reasonable. Sure. Reorganize tonight and just have it be effective date, June 13th or June 14th?
Okay.
I will make.
All right, good. So I don't know if anyone wants to begin. I can begin by making a nomination or any preference?
Are we doing Chair first?
Yeah, we can, whatever you guys want to do.
Typically do, yeah.
I'd like to nominate Mr. DeCoste for Chairman.
Second.
Do you accept that?
I do.
Excellent, okay, so we have a nomination and an acceptance and a second. All those in favor, Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye.
Can I vote myself? Aye. Do I exercise my rule of necessity here?
Right. Okay, excellent, so that will be Chuck will take over as Chair following town meeting, and so the second position would be Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Knox as Vice Chair.
Second.
Excellent. Do you accept that nomination, Mr. Knox?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded and accepted. All those in favor, Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, so Mr. Knox will take over as Vice Chair after our annual town meeting. For the position of Clerk, I'd like to nominate Mr. Nordhaus to be the Clerk of the Board. Would like to accept that or not?
I will accept that.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded and accepted. All those in favor, Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye, so Mr. Nordhaus will take over as Clerk of the Board following our town meeting in June. Excellent, great, thank you.
I'd just like to say, Cindy, thank you for your leadership over the past year and look forward to trying to fill your shoes over the next year. But thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Chuck, for that. Appreciate it. So next on the agenda, we have Department Board updates and requests. Oh, actually, do we have a reading of the mail, Mr. Insaldi?
Here we do, Madam Chair, thank you. Two, two quick things. The first one is we just received some program changes from Horizon stating that Channel 113 and 613 will be discontinued. And the second thing I want to talk about, if I, if I, Joe, if you can just add Nick in, Madam Chair, if I could just yield my time to Nick. He just wanted to talk about really briefly the kickoff meeting he had regarding Spec Pond Road, Road Water, Wrong, Water Transition Main regarding Well 5. So he's just going to be probably less than a minute, Nick.
Easy for you to say, Anthony.
I hope I do better than Anthony just did. Yeah, thanks, thanks to opportunity. We thought this would be a great way to reach the public and updating your Board on this project. We had the kickoff meeting last Thursday, and we had a follow-up meeting today with Highway Police and Fire, trying to figure out how this project's going to roll out. It's going to be a very quick project, and they're starting much quicker than we thought they were going to start. They're going to be starting May 17, which is next Monday. We're trying to figure out where they start, because there's a couple of different ways they can approach this. We're trying to do it in a manner that's least impactful to the community. This is the first part of the PFAS project. This is going to bring water from Spectacle Pond, well number five, down to Wickham House. We're hoping to be done by September 1st. The work on 2A110, we're working with the contractor to do that work at night. We're hoping to start there, because if we start at 2A110 and on Spec Pond Road, there's about three to four weeks worth of work there. That if they start at night on 2A110, hopefully school will be out by the time they move to Spectacle Pond Road. We, they presented traffic plan today with detours and road closures and so forth. It's still a lot of balls in the air to really get that out to you folks. I gave you the schedule, at least I gave it to Anthony, I'm sure he shared it with you. Their anticipated schedule they have right now, but that's going to change over the next week, and I'll share any information I have with Anthony, so he can share it back with you guys. And obviously, the transfer station's impacted here, so we're working with Chris Stoddard, his team, and the contractor to minimize the impact there as well. The good part with that piece of the project, it's on the widest part of Spectacle Pond Road, so we're trying to do this project in a way that won't impact the hours of the transfer station. So I don't know if there's any specific questions about this.
Any questions from the Board for Mr. Lawler?
As far as getting the word out there, are we doing anything in particular to let residents know when it's going to be, the folks that live on Spec Pond or Hartwell?
Yep. Yeah, we're doing multiple ways, Facebook, the website. It's the same link as the PFAS page. Since the PFAS project, we highly recommend anybody from the community to sign up on that page notification, because we're going to put every update on that page which automatically email anybody that's on the subscription list of the project. We're going to do a press release. Every method possible, we'll do reverse dial-in one, just to that parts of town. And obviously, any other ways you guys can think of, let me know, we'd be more happy to.
Nick, maybe door knockers, just stuff that hangs on people's door knob, just to give them all those links and...
Yep, we're doing that. That should, we don't know yet what to say, because we don't have a schedule, but we're hoping to have that tomorrow, then Wednesday, Thursday, get the door hangers out, at least in those neighborhoods, Spec Pond, Whitetail, Spot and Arrow, Hartwell, the ones that are impacted the most.
All right, great, excellent, thank you.
All right. Another thing I'd like to say is that we did get our sample back when Spec Pond was online, and that sample showed less than 20 parts per trillion for PFAS. So there aren't any indications that PFAS water above the 20 went out during that maintenance. So that press release went out last week, but I just thought you guys would be curious to know that.
That's excellent.
And we'll be sharing that email that Nick indicated. I'm just sifting through the couple hundred that I've received along the way, so you'll get that within the next day.
Okay, excellent, great.
Thanks for always being ahead of things, we really appreciate it. Even that last update on the, on the results of the testing.
Yep, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Thanks, you too. And so now we are on to item number three, Conservation Commission, 119 Tehadawon demolition permit and award of the contract.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a continuation of a discussion, which Joe will lead us through on some, the Board requested some follow-up with the folks from the MVP, and I think Joe has an update regarding that.
Yeah, thanks, Anthony. So Board members, that our last meeting, when we presented the quotes for demolition, as the question asked about how the demolition of the existing house entered into the project. Doing some, some research, we're able to pull up back at the Board's June 1, 2020 meeting, when the Board was discussing the submission of the MVP program. Former Select Board member Chase Gerberg had covered that topic and, and really identified that within the discussion that the existing home should be demolished, so that as part of the project, it was included within the motion of the Board at that June 1 meeting, which then made it into that grant program. And through the state process, was, was viewed as a significantly beneficial part as far as having a contiguous open space parcel. Working with Amy Green, we did get in touch with the folks who administer the MVP program, and they did say that there, there could be some significant negative impacts associated with changing the project at this, at this point. We do recommend that, that it basically just be used per the Board's discussion last week as far as a strategic demolition, looking through to see what could be salvaged. And we've asked the Fire Department not to conduct exercises there. In talking with Amy Green, there is going to be a kiosk, and I think that there's an excellent opportunity for the town to really showcase the history of the parcel, the home, as part of that, that public education component that was also part of that grant program, so that at least the history of the property, history of the house, will be able to be preserved, and Littleton residents in the future will be able to learn how that property was acquired, and also a little bit more about the local history, and specifically, the family that had lived there.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair, may I just jump in real quickly?
Sure.
Joe, can you bring up the aerial of that, that, that home as it's situated on the parcel as far as it being contiguous to the lake?
Sure.
Just want to get some...
Give me a second to pull it up on GIS.
My only thought is, I mean, it was definitely discussed, it was definitely voted on, and demolition was what we had discussed based upon some recommendations by the building inspector, but you have to further review, going out there a couple of times. I don't see it as a significant part of that grant application, to be honest. I mean, if that's, if that's what Amy's telling us, that the MVP folks are standing by...
Yeah, so I'm just going to highlight a separate parcel to, whoops, I have to stop sharing for a second to do that, so that at least the parcel that I'm selecting allows us a better view as far as what, what we're looking at. Okay, so for the purpose of, as far as this discussion, just ignore the yellow highlighted. I just got off the map to the weekend. Have a better look at the aerial photo here for the land. So I know here it's a little hard to see. You have the single-family house right in this location. And so in the application for MVP, we had really identified this as the location for looking at affordable housing opportunities.
That's a pond.
Well, it's within this four acres, so we are talking about more in this area. So there, you know, looking here, there may be some, some wetlands, or at least some surface water at this point.
It's a pond right now.
And the application was basically trying to have more of a contiguous open space rather than being sort of interrupted with a single-family home and then the activities around it, so that can, can then proceed, whoops, that doesn't carry with it, across the street to town land that also then is owned by, by the town as well.
Chuck, what do you, what are your thoughts? What do you...
I don't know, I just, I, I don't want to call BS on it, but I, the only high and dry land, really, is where the house is located right now. There's a foundation behind where the house is located right now. And honestly, Cindy, if you hadn't brought it up at the last meeting, it just would have gone forward and would have been demolished, whether it was a practice, a training session for the Fire Department, or just a controlled demo, it probably just would have gone forward. But after looking at it further and going back and looking at our notes, it wasn't like we had a whole lot of debate over whether or not this is significant to the grant application or the connectivity, and, you know, there's certainly plenty of room for wildlife corridors and that kind of thing, which is, you know, some of the conversation that we did have. But even with the home kind of carved out as a single-family lot, whether it be something we use for housing, or donated to scouts, or, you know, to have a lodge or something like that, that there might be some other use that would allow us to retain that and use it for some other, some other use that's related to open space and nature and training, and I don't know, I...
Well, I see Amy's on the call, so we can ask her. Hi, Amy, how are you?
Hi, good evening, yes, sorry I had to jump off two weeks ago, but Concom was getting started, so just missed you by a few minutes. The grant was predicated on that corridor being open without any, basically, human influence inside it. The wildlife that's going up towards Long Park from the town forest area, some of it, like the otters, can certainly go through the wetlands, but the other ones need to go through the upland passage and then snake up through the Horace Mann area alongside of the Long Lake marshes. And the way the MVP grant is, is awarded is they score points for various things. I haven't actually seen the score in there, but protecting the entire parcel without any housing on the main central parcel was, was what the grant was predicated on.
Okay.
I guess I'd love to see the scoring, you know, just to, just to see. That that wasn't, that wasn't how it was presented to us back last June. So it was part of the discussion, but it wasn't that it was predicated just on that. It was just the fact that we were protecting and adding to our inventory of open space.
Yeah, it certainly wasn't the most crucial thing, but in terms of, excuse me, the sustainability, and the climate change piece of it, is that as rain events may become more extreme, as the wetlands may increase or decrease, and as things get pushed out, you need a continuous area of topography for things to move through.
So I will say, the only reason I voted the way I did was because of the residential component. That was, that was very much advocated for, and a lot of the deliberation that we had was about some sort of affordable housing component to it. And that was what I was more, more focused on. And in further observation of that site, I think the location where the home is right now, and all the wildlife seems to be getting around it right now without, you know, without any issue. And we're not going to be able to put any kind of housing on that property if we're going to move it over to the site that Joe just designated.
Well, so a few things, Chuck, so we still have the affordable housing component to it. I don't know if that's the same lot that Bartlett and I walked for the Affordable Housing Trust or not, Joe. You know, it would be nice if we could utilize the existing farmhouse, but I'm certainly not willing to jeopardize the grant application in the way the town received. So at this point, I don't think there's, you know, we can't go back. It is what it is in some respects, but if we can salvage some components to that house, like we talked about, if there's anything in there that we could use and preserve it in some other area with some other affordable housing component, you know, new construction or something, you know, then that's, that's what we'll do. I'm personally happy that we're not going to burn the house down, that it's going to be a constructed demolition. And if that was part of the grant application, you know, preserving that wildlife corridor and the many other components, the scoring that you referred to, Amy, you know, at this point, I don't think there's, there's nothing that we can do to change that. So I don't know what you're looking for, Chuck, from...
I, I'm just, yeah, I just, I want to make sure that we're being as thoughtful as possible with regard to it. I, I, I mean, I'd be interested in finding out what are the other locations on that larger parcel where we could do some affordable housing. Is there some on the Harwood Ave side, which about, which would have, basically, there's a, I think it's a gas line gateway path that goes through the property behind the one...
AT&amp;T easement?
That's what it is, I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
So Amy, is there, so how much flexibility do we have on choosing a lot for the affordable housing component?
Well, let me back up a bit, and under the contracts with the state for the, for the grant itself, May 1 was the cutoff for any changes. So we're past that. Now, I'm not sure...
So that's kind of frustrating, sorry to interrupt, Amy. That's kind of frustrating, because we brought, we brought exactly that up to the administration at our last meeting. We wanted to...
Right, but we've, we've also been, been working through this for a year and with previous votes to go ahead and get the demo permits, or rather, to get the contractor lined up. So I don't know how the state would react to that. It would be a significant setback, and it also, it puts housing again in sort of the central corridor.
But it's, it's a large parcel of land, though, Amy, so where, I mean, we have some flexibility about where we can choose for the affordable housing component?
The, the way the grant is written is that the parcel that Joe showed on, I guess, what is that, the sort of northwest end, was not going to be included within the grant, within the MVP, within the grant piece of it itself. It was a set aside.
Okay, all right.
That's, again, that's not how it was presented. That's, that, that is, it was, that was a likely or a possible location with other locations as possibilities as well. So I, if the way that we wrote the grant was, and we got the grant, and I appreciate that, Amy, but it, again, my, my vote was contingent upon us getting some opportunity for affordable housing on that parcel, and it sounds like we're not going to get that.
Are you saying, Chuck, that that one area is not buildable?
Across from 120 to Tehadawon?
Yeah, that little corner.
Anything heading towards Foster Street on Tehadawon, from, I'd say, 75 feet from the drive, well, from the driveway, actually, from the driveway to the next residence, the Lyons's house, there's, I don't think it would perk, frankly. Not what I do for a living, but I've been out there and...
So, but is, that's not where we're choosing to build the affordable housing component?
That's what was set aside in the grant application.
Well, you know what, Chuck, if it doesn't perk, it doesn't perk. I mean, we'll still, we'll figure something out. I mean, I just, I feel like we're getting, we're, it's hypothetical. You're saying that it's not going to perk, but it's not like we have actually gone out there and done perk tests on the property.
But we also have a piece of property, it was, it was kind of a, as I understood it again, it was, this, it would be great if we could do it here, but if not, we could do it where the house is now.
Yeah, I never, I didn't get...
There were other parcels, that was...
I didn't get that out of the conversations that we've had personally. I just, I don't know what you're looking for right now, because we can't unring the bell, so I guess...
We may have been able to, but we waited until after the 1st of May.
Well, I was the one that actually just brought it up suddenly with the Board and said, "Hey, I don't want to burn the house down. Is there some way we could preserve it?" I was the one that brought that up last minute. I could have brought it up months ago, and maybe this conversation would be very different.
Perhaps.
Perhaps, but I just, I guess at the, this point, at this stage, I don't know what you're looking for for us, other than just to have the conversation.
Let's not lose sight of the fact that the affordable housing was also a significant factor for the MVP grant. And in earlier conversations with legislators months ago, they, I wasn't aware of this May 1 deadline. In fact, we, the first time we hear about it is after it passes. But they had, at the time, you know, I just kind of conversationally brought up that we might want to get some relief from the terms of the grant. They were willing to pursue doing that, didn't seem like, I don't remember, my memory is the same as Chuck's, on this point, I don't remember this being so integral to the whole thing, that, that being getting rid of the existing house. But the, you know, either way, whether it's the farthest northwest piece of property for housing, or whether it's this spot, that's also part of the plan that we presented. So that shouldn't be lost in the, in the presentation of this. I don't know that we have to go fast on any of this demolition or whatever it is, but we should probably start doing some things proactively on the affordable housing and to see what works, because that too was part of the proposed project.
Okay. All right.
Well, I know there are a lot of discussions about where the affordable housing could be... Well, I I know there are a lot of discussions about where the affordable housing could be, what to do with or without the the existing house. But but the the grant was specific that the house is going to be demolished. If there is affordable housing, it would be in that lot one northwest corner, whatever it is. MVP and, you know, I mentioned MVP that that maybe it'll turn out nonbuildable. They said that the grant did not hinge on that becoming affordable housing because it's outside the what would be the new prime line, but that it was a consideration.
Okay.
So obviously, they can come back and force you to build affordable housing there.
And but that component did help get the grant money. That did help with the whole process. Yeah.
That was my understanding.
It also helped the select board to make the decision. At least from my vote.
All the way around. I mean, it's it it puts the affordable housing right next to the conservation land, which is which is great too from my side of things, so.
Well, we'll just, well, we have an Affordable Housing Trust meeting tomorrow night and we can certainly move forward with that conversation on our end with that board. And, you know, start looking at that land, seeing what the next steps are. To see if we can, the affordable housing components can come to fruition as presented through the grant application, so. And if we can salvage some pieces of the existing house, I think that's great.
Yeah, I if I may, I have been through with the Historical Commission a couple of times, including just last week, and someone to sort of take a look and see what may be salvageable because I noticed the floorboards are not old. Someone mentioned maybe the doors might be worth salvaging, although I think they're on the small side for, you know, a modern build. The the beams are all kind of small. Nothing really struck them as something
Case work, nothing like that.
Real really worth worth pulling in.
Is the kitchen sink still there, Amy?
No, no, that's gone.
Gone?
Yeah, all sorts of things have worked off.
Yeah.
There was a big whetstone out there that that disappeared. I mean, it's people are digging up the plantings, so I put up signs to stop it, but
Right, right. Okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
It doesn't appear that, I mean, I think at this point, we're I appreciate Paul's point about not getting, we don't necessarily have to go fast on this, but it sounds like we're pretty pretty far down the road.
Chuck, honestly, I just don't understand what you're looking for us from the board. Like, what do you want us to do?
I'd rather know that there's other sites on the property that we can we can put affordable housing before we before we demolish that property.
So I just looked at the topographical features of that, and there's a 30-foot elevation change between that farmhouse and the first the first lot up up towards Foster Street. So there could be a section there that does perk.
Right. I mean, Chuck, do you want to risk losing the grant money in by demolishing the house?
When do we have to demolish the house in order not to lose the grant money?
It has to be down. Everything needs to be completed by June 30th. And we we still need to obviously get the contractor under contract, do the A and R, finish the survey, get a confirmation.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, Cindy, don't, I mean, it's clearly I just, I I I think it was, I don't want to say disingenuous, but I think that the the way it was presented last year in order to get approvals is different than what I'm hearing today.
Okay, I I don't know if any other board members have comments on this. I I don't I don't agree with that, but that was, that's just me and my, I have a different
But you you probably didn't have a problem, you probably didn't have a problem voting for the open space as it was and you're spending the money then. That's the reason I stated it. The reason I approved the money was because we were going to get the affordable housing component to it.
Right, and we might still get that.
We might.
Right, we might still get it. So that wasn't a deal breaker for me. My my
That's my point, Cindy. It was a deal breaker for me, and now it seems like the uprights, so that's all.
Okay, all right. Okay.
That's on me. So in the future, anytime I see a grant, before I say vote on anything, I'm going to have to read the grant more more thoroughly and ask the questions before the 12th hour because the 11th hour has already passed.
Okay. Any other board members have any comments on this? Okay, thank you, Amy. I appreciate you jumping on and providing some clarity.
Can I ask, I'm not, I'm not sure if you're finished, that we were looking for the approval to go ahead and award the demo contract?
Right. I mean, I don't have any problem at this point moving forward. The other members of the board, what are your thoughts? We do have a motion.
I believe
I mean, Chuck has a good point about the affordable housing, but make things work out. I think we have to move forward. If it's if we're going to be in jeopardy losing the MVP grant, then we need to move forward.
I agree.
Mr. Glady, what are your thoughts?
I don't like getting backed into this. I wasn't aware of a June 30th date until tonight. I wasn't aware of a May 1st date until tonight.
Agreed.
And I think our priority here is to establish the viability or where there is viability for the housing, which was part of the proposal as much as anything else was, so it's not going to impact the integrity of the property to put it somewhere on the fringes where it works, so. That's my priority. I'm not in a hurry to vote the demolition, but I imagine the votes are there to do it.
What's the deadline, Amy, for the demolition? Again, June?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. The the contractor, I told him I needed it done by June 18th, and he said he could he could probably schedule that in. So it it's it's getting tight. I have the the meeting, if if we go ahead with the the contractor, the demo permit would probably go in tomorrow and meeting more formally with the Historical Commission on Wednesday or Thursday, I think it is.
Okay, so June 18th. All right, so hypothetically, say that the board decides that they don't want to demo the house. That jeopardizes the grant, correct?
It was one of the three or four main things of a different scale, certainly, that were within the grant. So I'm not sure. It, the grant was written that the state would pay for 100% of the demo, except for we get 20% of the of the tank pool itself. They're paying for all that. So obviously, you at the very least would lose that piece. And I don't know what they would say about the other $750,000.
Okay, all right, so when's our next meeting? May 24th, Mr. Insaldi? All right. So what do you want to do? So we won't vote tonight on the demolition?
Cindy, I think I think it looks like you have three votes, so in in the interest of moving forward, I don't think that anything's going to change between now and then to sort of Paul's point. You know, if if it looks like you, Joe, and Matthew are ready to vote on this tonight moving forward.
That's not necessarily true.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't understand why we would wait at this point.
To take another look at the grant application, see if there is a way that we can create the affordable housing component where the existing farm stand farmhouse is.
Or maybe get an opinion from our legislators as to whether or not they think it's so critical. It wasn't critical in the pitch. It's become critical now, apparently.
Right. So Amy, I thought you had followed up with them and contacted some authorities who had said to you, don't mess with the grant application, just leave it the way it is and
Could you share that with us?
No, they they had they had just said, and this was in some other conversation I have with them, was that the state in general takes very seriously any changes in scope or schedule to the contract, to the to the grant application.
Okay.
Who's they?
They being the the MVP.
They're the ones who said that.
They're, yeah, they're they're the ones who run the grant program.
Well, I was just asking who made those statements to you is what I was asking.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. It was, I'm not sure if it was the regional coordinator or the woman who runs the the whole MVP show that that came from. It was going back between a few people.
I wouldn't want to jeopardize our grant by not being able to perform on the affordable housing either.
So that that the affordable housing was not part of the grant. Because the affordable housing was mentioned as another way piece of using the property. But as far as the sustainability and the municipal vulnerability preparedness piece of it, affordable housing is not part of of the reason for the grant.
I thought specifically we had these conversations even on site when the we did the site walk with the folks from the programs and 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 in being presented with this as an option, that that very much was part of the scoring component that would help us if we were using part of this affordable
Yeah, they they said it it was, and I never pinned them down on this. It was a little bit amorphous because it is outside literally the property lines that would be set. That they really liked the idea of affordable housing being next to the open space or you know, I guess potentially within the open space. But that they can't require the affordable housing. Because it was not within the grant application. Does that make sense?
No.
A little bit amorphous, a little bit amorphous, if you ask me.
Yeah. Okay, so what I would like to do is take a look at the grant application. I'd like to hold off on the demo voting on this tonight, to be honest with you, now that we've talked this through, and just take a closer look at it.
And frankly, the contractor that it looks like is doing the demo could probably do some perk work for us.
Well, there have been, you've been talking, Chris Doddard could could do that too.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
Can I just like make one more objection to that plan?
Sure.
I understand, I understand there's some emotional attachment to the house. Mr. Mullen, last last time we met, stated that it was absolutely not going to be financially viable to save this this location. I I'm not sure why we're arguing over whether or not to demo this house when it was pretty clearly part of the original grant, and it's pretty clearly not a financially viable option to go forward. Like, there's, I mean, what are we, what are we trying to save? Are, you know, we're we're not only risking $750,000, we're potentially discussing spending a lot of money rehabbing a house where that that money would be better spent building a new house.
Yeah.
Especially since the state is paying for the demo.
Right, so I think you misunderstand. So I, that's a good point, Matthew. I think you're misunderstanding me. I have no desire to rebuild the house. So I get what you're saying, like, why not vote on demoing it tonight? Because either way, it needs to come down to your point.
That that is
Even if we decide that that is where we want to rebuild for affordable housing is on that lot, that's kind of secondary to actually, the house needs to come down regardless.
Agreed. That, yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
And if I may, Madam Chair, I agree with the building coming down, but I I do have concerns about the affordable housing part because I too was under the impression that was part of what we discussed. So I have no problem with the building coming down as long as affordable housing goes someplace on that property.
Okay, all right.
And and I will say, I'm I'm nervous about it anyway. I'm getting silly nervous about the June 30th deadline to have all this done.
All right. Any objection from the board for moving forward with voting to demo the house to retain the contractor for the demolition services at this point?
No objection.
Chuck, Paul, Joe, how do you feel about that?
Personally, I feel the demolition has nothing to do with the problem we're talking about, about the affordable housing part. I don't know how we work on that now, but that was part of the everything we worked on, but the house has to come down anyway.
Okay, right.
Yeah, I was just going to add that with demolition of the house, that may then allow for us to also get back to MVP as far as pursuing the the location of the affordable if one other location doesn't work out. Since that demolition would have to be done anyways per the recommendation or the opinion of the building commissioner.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I'm gonna, I think we're ready for a motion. Let's see how it goes.
Move the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town the quotation demolition services of the existing single-family structure at 119 to Hademan Road, subject to permitting and approval of relevant town boards committees.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Nordhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Glady?
Make all abstain on that.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Decost?
Decost is going to abstain as well.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion is approved by a vote of three in favor and two abstaining abstentions. Great, thank you. Thanks again, Amy.
Yeah, good night.
Good night. Okay, so now we are on to item 3B, Department of Public Works' approval grant application for Mast D O T Shared Streets Program, Newtown Road Sidewalk Extension and Pedestrian Crossing.
I'm going to promote Chris Doddard.
He's on his way.
There he is. Here I am.
Good evening, Chris. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good. So I want to have Joe help me on this because we're kind of working together on this, but basically Mast D O T came out with a shared space grant for up to $50,000, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the key to this is there's a deadline of September 7th for full implementation of the project, so obviously it's incredibly quick. So we kind of tried to look at some areas that we could do something in that we could finish it by September. And one of those options is it's actually part of the Complete Streets Tier Two Prioritization Plan, which would be number eight, and that's the trail, it's the sidewalk trail connectivity project at Newtown Road, so if you go down Newtown Road right near the Yap property, the new parking area there, the sidewalk ends about 150 feet short of it on the other side of the road, so what we would use this money for would be to actually extend that sidewalk a little bit, put a curb ramp on both sides of the road with a crossing and some some signage. So that way we connect obviously the sidewalk to the property. It stays under the $50,000. We can actually do this entirely with DPW Highway staff minus some of the sign work. If we go the route of electric signs, like electric beacons, we obviously need to contract that out for the electricity portion of it, but vast majority of it we can do in-house and it falls underneath the $50,000 budget or maximum, and we can get it done by September, so. This is kind of what the project we thought would make the most sense, and it ticks off one of the Complete Streets projects that the town identified.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Any any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, one quick question. Is the crosswalk go to, is the crosswalk near or or go into the parking lot that that's on that side of the road for the Yap Land?
Yeah, we would have it land on the other side of Newtown Road. We would stay totally within the right of way of Newtown Road. Obviously, we can kind of add the backside of the sidewalk, dive it off and have a gravel path. Actually, if we have enough money left over, we could pave it too. The intention is to connect from the parking area to the new sidewalk.
Great, thank you.
Close as possible.
Excellent.
All right, great. Okay, any other questions from the board? We ready for a motion? Anyone? I don't know if we still have Mr. Glady with us.
Joe, you're muted.
I got it. Move the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign and submit the Newtown Road Sidewalk Extension and Pedestrian Crossing Project to the Mast D O T Shared Street Program.
Second.
Motion's been made. And seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Nordhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Decost?
Mr. Decost is aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next we are on to Elder and Human Services, Accept Donations. You have three donations to accept.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, so we had uh received three donations. One from Christine Grimes for the TRED program, tax relief for the elderly and disabled in the amount of $825.81. And that money will go directly into a special account, which is used for tax relief. And eligible residents can apply starting in August for that program. And information will be made available in our monthly broadcaster, um, the website, we'll send an email blast as well as posting an announcement on Facebook. And um, the money goes towards third and fourth quarter taxes. The second donation is a donation made by one of the members of the select board, Matthew Nordhouse. He had donated his uh stipend uh from being on the select board to the department, earmarked specifically to the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction. And I know this coalition was developed a couple of years ago in response to the opioid, opioid crisis. Um, and a lot of work has been shed around this issue and we plan to use the money for enhanced outreach as well as program development. Um, if residents are currently struggling uh or suffering from addiction or if they know of someone who's struggling, please do contact our department. Nicole Sarbella, our assistant director, um, is a great person to connect with in terms of resources that are available. And that was in the amount of $2,000. And then lastly, the Friends of the Littleton Council on Aging donated $504 for purchase of punch cards for the Springdale Farm Senior Box Program through the administration of our department. And they have supported this program in the past, so we thank them for continuing to support the program. And Jamie Cruz at Springdale is planning on matching what is being purchased. So we do thank her as well for that generous gesture. And then today during the Council on Aging Board meeting, Anita Harding, one of our board members, also mentioned that Jamie had donated pansies for our May Basket Program, which is coming up on this, um, this Wednesday. So uh, we thank Jamie and, and the farm for the donations.
Excellent. Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, everybody, um, for your continued generosity. We've seen a, a lot of that this year, it's been wonderful. So I think we're ready for a motion.
We go? Yeah. Move the select board vote in accordance with its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose to approve donations to elder and human services from $825.81 from Kristen Grimes for the tax relief for the elderly and disabled TRED. $2,000 from Matthew Nordhouse for the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction, LCAA. $504 for the friend, from the Friends of Littleton Council on Aging to purchase punch cards for the Springdale Farm Senior Box Program.
Second.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Decost?
Chuck Decost is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, the motion is approved, is written, Matthew, should you abstain?
Oh, I maybe, I don't know. Sure, let, let's say.
I don't know, I just.
For the record, I abstain, it's, that's fine.
No, I'm just, yeah. Received, I don't know.
Can I ask Anthony a question real quick? Do we need to amend that to, to include the, uh, the gift of Jamie matching the 504? It's not written, it wasn't submitted, but.
I think, I think we do.
Oh, sorry.
Anthony, Ashley, you know, you know.
Chuck, we could do that at a later time once we identify what that document comes to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're planning on that for the next select board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, excellent, great, thank you, Ashley, thank you, everybody. So the motion is approved, is written. And now we are on to item 3D, Planning Board Submission of Preliminary Determination of Eligibility Application to DHCD. Do you want to lead us in on this?
Sorry, Joe, we, you, um, do you want to go through this one?
Uh, Maren Toole, Town Planner, is on her end.
Okay.
There she is.
Yeah, sure.
Are you there, Maren? I don't know if she's on.
Maybe Ashley could take this one.
I think we go across the hall, hold her. Do you want me to hear this?
I, I apologize, I had a quick explanation and I was unmuted.
Oh, no worries, how are you?
Apparently, I'm still uh having problems with Zoom. I'm well, thank you.
So do you want to lead us into this, Maren, what you're looking for from the board this evening?
Thank you, um, so this request is to the select board to approve a preliminary application to DHCD for the 40R program. The planning board approved the final wording of the 40R Smart Growth District Bylaw for the Littleton Train Station area. And the next step for the town, um, other than town meeting, is to apply for a preliminary approval from DHCD. Um, information that goes into the application includes um the 40R bylaw, the mapping uh that M A P C has helped us with and the design guidelines uh that were adopted, uh, adopted on a preliminary basis in January. Um, and that was the work that Peter Flinker had completed with the um Station Area Committee.
Okay. So what happens in the event that the bylaw doesn't pass at town meeting? This is something that needs to be done now or should it, we wait until to see the, what happens with the bylaw?
Uh huh, um, DHCD prefers that they do a preliminary review in case they have any recommended changes that we need to bring to town meeting.
Okay. All right.
Um, if I can also add in, um, because the, the process ends up being, you know, a little, sometimes a little complicated because um DHCD wants to know what was approved, but then also um, they may have comments. So uh, even if town meeting failed to approve the 40R, um, uh, from my own experience, I'd recommend submitting because one, we'll get that feedback, but two, um, it allows us to make sure we continue that process since if it did not pass, we would likely have an idea as far as what are some of the reasons to then revisit it at fall town meeting. Um, so uh, there's no, there's no specific um, uh, cost that not, at, at submitting it. There's not a negative impact as far as, um, it doesn't impact our ability to go back and revise it. Um, uh, for uh, for bylaw and, and town that I previously worked in. Uh, we went back and forth with DHCD um for two town meetings, trying to refine it at the 40R bylaw at the request of the property owner who was trying to make some final changes to uh make that development a little bit more feasible. And DHCD is great to work with, um, they, they handled our modifications very easily. But it was great to be able to have that initial feedback, that initial approval. So at least we knew where we stood um from the standpoint of DHCD.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Um, so Joe or Maren, um, so this is basically like a non-binding referendum, they just want to, you know, it's kind of test on the waters, um, but as far as the located map's concerned, we really don't tie this to any specific location at this time from what I saw on the application. Right?
It is tied to the proposed zoning district that um M A P C had been helping the planning board prepare.
So is that that entire West Littleton area all the way up Foster to Taylor? Or it's specifically the quote unquote Norbloom property?
If, if I may, it's uh specifically uh the Norbloom property plus um between 16 and 17 acres of the 191 Foster Street program. Excuse me, Foster Street site, the, the Life Care Center parcel. And that's the map that shows the entire proposed 40R district and um the three uh sub-districts.
That, that's from the Flinker report?
No, that's from uh the mapping that M A P C did.
Okay, but it's not included here.
Oh, my apologies. Um, it's, is on the um Littleton Station Area page.
Right. That, okay. So we're pretty much locked in to that parcel on the 495, between 495 and Foster Street. And it doesn't go anywhere on the other side of Route 2 of Foster Street or Taylor Street.
Uh, the planning board chose to move forward with um this 40R district at this time.
Okay.
It does, it also, um, I don't know if this is maybe what you're getting at, Chuck. Um, it doesn't prevent us from applying for modification or extending the district in the future. So we are able to make modifications, even if it was to, to reduce it. Um, uh, off of uh the planning uh board uh website, um, Maren's done a great job uh putting all these documents out, this is the, the latest map. Um, that's, that's available, that shows that area. But in the future, if um the town wanted to expand or, or.
Modify.
Exactly, um, there is that, that opportunity.
Which would be subject to voter approval to expand it.
Correct, correct.
We're not tied into, this is again like a non-binding referendum, we send it to the state, they, they say, eh, it looks pretty good. Or.
Yeah. It's, it's essentially a, um, because uh to be fully recognized as 40Rs uh as a 40R bylaw um and also to have the corresponding 40S payments along with it. Uh, the leg, the, the enabling legislation on the state side uh does require that uh changes, the bylaw be reviewed and approved by DHCD and any changes in amendments also be approved and reviewed by DHCD. Um, it's make sure that it's consistent with um state guidelines for, for smart growth. Um, hence why uh we also worked to prepare design guidelines with Dr. Flinker uh so we can make sure that we're meeting the, the necessary standards.
Is it, do you find it unusual that we're including property we don't own? The Life Care Center property?
Most, um, most.
I mean.
Are, are done on properties that the town does not own.
Yeah, I, I guess I didn't phrase that correctly. I mean, we know we have one group that's at the table that's eager to, you know, develop their land, but we've had zero conversations with the Life Care Center um about their property and their plans and what they might want to do or might not want to do. So it just seems presumptuous to me to include that piece when we, it's unknown what their intentions are, whether they would work with Butters or with the town or whoever to, to develop that land as proposed in the.
The question, um, the planning board did discuss that issue at the final hearing um last Thursday evening. And uh overall, there are, there's the potential for uh significant benefit to the town and to the residents if we include that parcel, um, the 17 acres of the Life Care Center parcel in the rezoning attempt. Um, it signals that the town is interested in residential development that is uh associated, um, even if just by proximity, you know, to the Life Care Center. And it signals that um the town is interested in, in development that could extend uh another way of access to the site. Perhaps um towards Harwood Avenue, perhaps um to, to the Life Care Center driveway that comes in off of Foster Street.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Nordhouse, did you have a comment?
One quick question in the packet, uh, in the um, the document under section four, uh, Smart Growth Design Standards and Additional Municipal, there's a comment that the town planner will provide after further policy direction from the planning board. Can you clarify what that, what that policy direction will cover?
Um, let's see, all policy direction was provided Thursday evening. Um, so the version 10 that went out uh late this afternoon included the updates in the bylaw. Um, help me out, what, which section four?
It's um Smart Growth Starter Homes zoning under Design Standards and Additional Municipal Standards?
Um, yes, we, um, I took out the words um Starter Homes because that refers to a specific state program. And I inserted instead our definition of cottage dwelling, which is already in our, our zoning bylaw, just to, to, to clarify.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from other board members? You ready for a motion?
Want me to go again?
If you want it.
You want to tell your own to do?
I got it, move the select board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town, the application of preliminary determination of eligible eligibility to the DHCD for Littleton Station 40R bylaw.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Nordhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Decost?
Chuck Decost is aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, the motion is approved, is written, thank you, Maren.
Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it.
Sure. So next we're on to uh public input and members' updates, do we have anyone for public input, Mr. Layden?
Uh, yes, we have, um, whoops, just, uh, we have uh three people so far, first is Mike Zeldin.
Good evening, Mr. Zeldin.
Good evening, I, I just have quick, uh, on two unrelated items, uh, with your permission. Um, the first one is some encouragement for uh Mr. Decost, who noted that, that uh he was concerned about getting an appropriate perk rate in the particular property uh on 119 Tarral Hana One. I just want to let him know that there are at least two technologies that have been used in Littleton quite extensively by knowledgeable engineers and owners um that allow uh the installation of appropriate personal disposal systems uh that fall under the, shall we say, the regulations of Title V. So don't give up hope, there may be ways to, as it were, uh accommodate sometimes very difficult uh lots. The, the second thing, I just want to bring the uh, the board up to date on a recent development as of Friday regarding the Board of Health. Um, the, the two items are, A, uh, Jim Graffy, the Director of the Nishoba Association of Boards of Health, has agreed uh mainly by uh being awarded money by the state. He's going to be adding an additional sanitarian to his staff and has agreed that uh when we need additional or when he needs additional assistance to cover the properties on a timely 45-day basis, he will have a helping hand to back him up so that time doesn't get lost and we remain as efficient as possible in, going into an unknown market with an unknown demand. The second has an agreement that the, as according to a memo, uh memorandum of agreement between the town of Littleton and the Nishoba Group um as well, well as a statement several years old about the kinds of services being offered that the uh Nishoba Board of Health will now use um same-day email to keep the office in Littleton informed, not just of the applications that come in across their desk as well as the receipts for the fees, but also a complete packet of the final resolution of permits and other licenses. I just want to let you know that the Board of Health continues uh to prepare or do its best effort to prepare to provide a service to the town and at the same time prepares for a transition if and when that transition can be begun, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Zeldin. Great, thank you, Mr. Zeldin. Anyone else, Mr. Layden?
My apologies. Next, we have Kimberly Mayo.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Kimberly Mayo wanted to speak tonight about Littleton Station Village forty zone, forty R zone change. I waited to speak...
Address?
What's your address?
One forty Howard Avenue. I waited to speak almost three hours at Thursday night's planning board meeting, along with other concerned residents. But at the last minute, we were told we only had two minutes to speak, so I didn't get to finish. I'll be as succinct as possible tonight and appreciate not being cut off. I would like to invite everyone to review LCTV's video of the hearing. Thank you, Mark Corey and his staff. I don't agree with many of her viewpoints, but I do admire Linda Houston for her candor and professionalism. Regardless of one's views on affordable housing, it was my interpretation, two planning board members thought forty R wasn't viable without proper impact studies. And three said it wouldn't even get bank financing at the agreed-upon percentage. So let's make sure this never passes. I ask Littleton residents and select board members to come to vote again Saturday, June ninth, pardon me, Saturday, June twelfth at nine AM. Alumni Field, the rain date is the thirteenth. To those that might be new to these hearings or to town government, as I am, our planning board is acting in an advisory capacity advocating a zoning amendment to help along so that would be terrible for our town. The land is now zoned for industrial, not high-density residential. They're looking at three hundred and twenty-two high-density, eighty medium-density, one twenty-three low-density, twenty-five percent affordable, even though they likely can't finance it, as well as thirty thousand square feet of retail. This would bring an additional nine hundred to fourteen hundred residents to our town. We'd love the land to be undeveloped, but a small office building as zoning currently allows would be the lesser of two evils. It's zoned that way for a reason. Safety is a major fear. Foster Street is dangerous now, and it would be worse, especially the four corners with Harwood. I've experienced many close calls, and sadly, a family friend was once killed by a pedestrian in Littleton nearby, so this needs to be taken seriously. Our concern is, even with the proposed road expansion, that the infrastructure cannot possibly handle the massive increase in road traffic. This is not Charlotte or Denver or some other planned area that can easily incorporate such projects. This is old New England and requires planning that factors such status in, and this is not one of those projects. You can fix the immediate area, but how do you fix the rest of Foster, Tarral Hattawan and Harwood? Yes, some sections are wide enough to be reworked, some, but the rows are lineal. One spot will be okay, but a hundred feet further down, houses on both sides are far too close to existing rows as it is. What do you do for that section? Do you build a flyover for the pedestrian and bicycle traffic to divert to? What do you do with the already dangerous blind turn and intersection between Foster and Harwood? Do you seize the houses on either side to remove the danger? And that would increase exponentially with increased traffic. That we calculate to one thousand plus more trips a day or that stretch of road. That one thousand trips a day figure, I will add, is very conservative based on other regional studies. It's based upon the number of bedrooms with a single vehicle assigned to each bedroom, multiplied by a standard number of trips per day per person. What about the gorgeous historic stone walls? I really, really love them. Why is this, why was this pushed to town vote in the absence of safety studies and those for traffic, fire, police departments? How can these roads possibly handle easy access for emergency vehicles and be safe for dogs, wildlife, pedestrians, cyclists and other drivers? Furthermore, the nursing home wants no part of this, as was stated tonight. Yet, Planning Board Chair made comments regarding the business interests of the Life Care Center. This is not a direct quote, but he said something to the fact he hopes they sell it and it will be developed. I'm not sure if their senior management is aware of his comments yet or if they saw the hearing, but they will be. One of my grandmothers lived there briefly on a rehab assignment, and I volunteered there as a kid. Because they don't wish to participate and want to keep their lovely grounds with alpacas and horses intact, as we understand it, traffic would spill up further up the road. What a mess. Yet, we've seen no formal traffic impact studies, as I just pointed out. We're supposed to take a leap of faith and trust the Littleton Station Village Planning Committee. Do you think they have everyone's best interest in mind, given the type of development we've experienced in recent years where anything goes? Enough is enough. They mention a housing crisis for young professionals. My twenty-something-year-old friends and those in their early thirties aren't the type to go and complain to town officials. They can't afford Littleton and want shiny new housing created for them. Like those before them, including myself, they believe in good old-fashioned work and saving up. Like I did, they live with roommates, family or in other less expensive regions. I couldn't afford Littleton until an older age. There's nothing new or unique about that, and the taxpayer in town doesn't owe them anything. The planning board champions this as a solution for our seniors. Many members of the planning board do. It is not, it is absolutely not. I do care about our seniors. Listen to today's Council on Agent Board meeting on LCTV and all the concerns by their board members. Words like disingenuous and misleading were used. They stated seniors would not be taking the train to Boston or Wellham, which I agree with. It is illegal and against fair housing for units, both rentals and those of purchase, to be designated for our seniors. Lottery for affordable housing is open to all ages, including non-Littleton residents. Only a small percentage will be affordable and the majority market rate inexpensive. We realize some seniors wish to downsize, but the majority wish to age in place and stay in their homes. According to AARP, nearly ninety percent of people age sixty-five and up want to stay in their homes for as long as possible, and eighty percent believe their current residence is where they will always live. None of us moved here for the big city experience. There's nothing wrong with that, but that's not what Littleton is about. Most seniors and people in Littleton are concerned about future generations. Their grandkids, nieces, nephews, kids, neighbors and friends. Would this type of development really make Littleton a better community? Less wildlife, tons of traffic, higher taxes, since housing negatively impacts town finances? Potentially higher student-teacher ratios, more strain on first responders, less safety on the roads? Definitely not, not to most of us. If you really want to help seniors in town, please consider voting to help get the ball rolling on a new senior community center, which I understand will be on our ballot. Maybe if the lungs are truly passionate about seniors in the town, they will donate to assist it. Regarding our schools, the Littleton School Committee was not consulted, and it was explained to me, they do not historically have a position on, excuse me, they do not have an official position on this project, and I'm told historically they have not taken positions on various housing developments in Littleton. Their leadership was helpful in answering our questions. Testimony on the Littleton Station Village page from a mom details thirty kids in her son's class, and there does not appear to be a thirteen-to-one ratio, but low to mid twenties per class. The fact additional schools will not, the fact that additional schools will not be built seems illogical to many of us. The MAPC study quoted by the town shows no correlation with an increase in the number of students and density, but this would bring many more residents than the forty B on Great Road. And much has changed, though it's a big unknown. Regarding affordable housing and forty B, as of February two thousand and nineteen, in Massachusetts, more than eight out of every ten communities fall short of ten percent. And almost fifty percent have less than five percent affordable housing.
Kimberly, just one second, how much longer do you have?
I would like to have less than two minutes, I'm almost done.
Okay, please.
And could she restate her address for the record again? I didn't get her address.
I've already stated, I'd like to finish up what I have to say.
It wasn't clear, your address wasn't clear, Kimberly. Excuse me, your address wasn't clear.
I've said it multiple times.
Well, I think you said one forty, and there is no one forty, Harwood Ave in Littleton.
I will clarify that off the record, I said my address many times.
You don't get to speak then.
I know, I know, Mr. Knox, he was my softball coach growing up, I mean...
That's fantastic.
You're being very aggressive, you were very aggressive with Ms. Green as well. Please let me finish, you have my address.
You have to be a resident in order to speak at one of our meetings. And you're not identifying yourself as a resident. One forty Harwood Ave is not a legal address in Littleton.
That's not what I said, I am a resident, please let me finish.
We need to know your address, or we can ask you to be muted.
What's your address, please?
Cindy, I've clarified that with you over email multiple times, you guys keep asking.
Can you clarify it for the record, we're in a public meeting? This is public input, what is your address, please?
I just stated what my address was to you over email, you keep asking.
You need to state it again, please.
I don't want my address put on blast, which is why I'm not, I'm not restating what I've already told you.
Then we're all done here, Kimberly, I'm sorry. If you're not going to be transparent with us, we're all set, thank you. Do we have anyone else for public input, Mr. Layden?
Yes, we have Erica, and then we have two others after that.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi, Erica Pudgorny, six Fox Lane. I just wanted to ask about, now that we have the report about the septic issues at the point, what are the next steps the town is going to take? You know, to make sure that our water quality and soil qualities aren't affected and that we're protecting the businesses at the point.
Matt, yeah, we have two other comments, too. Our paragraph is done.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have Marge Payne.
Hi there.
Good evening, hi.
I just want to clarify Kimberly Mayo's comment about the COA Board today, and there was misquoting and it was inaccurate information. I would ask the board members to watch the tape of the meeting if they have questions, that's all.
Great, thank you, Marge.
Yeah.
Do we have anyone else, Mr. Layden?
Yes, lastly, we have Sam Park.
Good evening, Mr. Park.
Hi, am I, you hear me?
We can.
Well, great, thank you. I'm not sure if this is the right forum or not, but I know there's a lot of rumors circulating about our project and our commitment to the town. So I just thought I would give you a quick update on two or three critical issues that we are facing today. As you know, most of the people in the town know, we've been in the town for quite a few years, and we've always been very open and transparent with everything that we've done. That said, some of the tenants in our center have asked me to sort of brief the selectmen because there's a lot of rumors that seem to be impacting their businesses unfairly. But for the, before I go there, I just want to share one key theme on this stuff. And as many of you know, there was a treatment plant that we own, and the issues that deal with this treatment actually have nothing to do with this backup that occurred in Building C. And I'm sure not all of your listeners or residents understand that issue, but let me share with you one thing. The backup that we had in Building C was caused by a clogged pipe in the building. That's not a DEP issue, and that's not a plant issue. Our plant has never, can't cause an impact in any building because the plant is three football fields away and three stories below grade compared to Building C. So I just want to make sure that is understood. And I can go into more of the details as to why I believe certain groups are, you know, raising, I guess painting us in a bad light. But we don't usually respond to the social media stuff. What I do want to point out is how we do have two critical issues with the plant that have surfaced. One is the strength of our sewer flow. And the strength, it's kind of like, I'm not a sanitary engineer, but I understand it's sort of like the octane of the sewage. The plant was designed by a company called Natural Systems. They're a leading national company in private utility systems. They designed, they built, and they operate the system for Beaverbrook Wastewater Treatment Facility. And unfortunately, the flows that are being generated, while the volume is consistent with what they predicted, the strength of the flow is much higher. Consequently, the plant operator has needed to kind of meter down the speed at which they can process flow to protect Beaverbrook and the watershed. This plant has never dumped any raw sewage into Beaverbrook. That has been debunked many times. The plant has never contaminated the water supply. That has been debunked both by your engineers as well as independently. So I think that's the big, but the sewage, sewage strength issue is one that we are wrestling with right now. The plant was designed for thirty-eight thousand gallons per day, and it was designed to handle all the buildings that you see built there. The second phase of the plant was, is designed to handle basically the buildings you don't see. Buildings J, K and M, which might include a second hotel and the two buildings up at the top of the hill. The plant is not the former Cisco plant that is falsely presented by one of our former tenants. And it was built, designed and permitted for this project based on this program, based on the restaurant, theater, the hotel and market basket uses that are there. So anything other than that is really disingenuous. The claim that it was, I know there's been repeated claims that we are relying on an old Cisco RBC system, which stands for rotator something system. We have a membrane system that was state-of-the-art, that was designed for it, but for the strength of our sewage flow, I guess they call them BODs, it's been functioning fine. So I think that's the key thing. The way we're going to address the aeration, just so you're aware, is we've already ordered a new aeration system to supplement what's there today. The BODs require a higher level of aeration. Those tanks actually have been pre-ordered, the plans were submitted to DEP two weeks ago, or maybe last week, apology. And as soon as DEP has reviewed the design, has improved the installation, we're going to install those. So that handles the strength issue. The second issue that we do face at the plant is the fact that we have very successful restaurants at the point, and those tend to lead to very high Friday and Saturday night traffic. I guess that you could call it like a peak hour of sewage. Those volumes were underestimated by the engineers and the operator when they designed the plant. And combined with the fact that the plant is, needs to be metered down temporarily while we increase the aeration, has caused us, I guess you can call it sort of a traffic jam of sewage. So that is the second issue we're dealing with. When we install the aeration system, we will also be installing two additional equalization tanks, basically to allow us to take the restaurant flows from Saturday and Sunday and basically move them to Sunday and Monday when there is less demand on this treatment plant. It's sort of like metering it. And that should fix the problems for the existing plant. But it's, you know, I have a technical report that I was going to share, but I didn't realize this meeting was on Zoom. So I don't, I'm not really equipped to present some of the plans and what have you at some point. Happy to meet with the administration and the DPW to share these findings with you. But, you know, if anyone's interested in, you know, what actually happened in Building C, which seems to be the focus of social media sphere, I can tell you that, you know, we have done everything we can to figure out all the causes. In fact, but it didn't have it, the plant has nothing to do with the backup that occurred in Building C. There have been a lot of claims that there have been flooding at numerous buildings. Those are just simply untrue. We have correspondence from Metro Rock, from Title Boxing, from Great Clips that have clearly debunked those claims. I'm not sure where they are originating, but they're clearly libelous and slanderous. And while we don't usually respond to them, in this case, we may. But it's, I guess that's really it. I have, you know, I'm happy to really just answer any questions, but I guess if I could say, if everyone can leave this, especially anyone on this broadcast, I will tell you that there's never been any raw sewage dumped into Beaverbrook. The plant and its operations have never impacted the town's water supply. And there have been no floods in other tenant spaces like Title Boxing, Metro Rock or Great Clips that were caused by the treatment plant. In fact, and just for, you know, there's a lot of details with this system. We have three sewage collection systems at the point. One serves the sort of what I'll call the lower level, the hotel, Starbucks, et cetera. One serves market basket, and one serves all the buildings on the upper level, including the So Vital space and future development. Now, that system was actually designed with twice the capacity of the other two collection systems because it's also designed to handle all the future development as well. So, you know, we're hoping that within the next couple of weeks, we'll have approval from the town, I mean, from the DEP to install the additional aeration and the additional storage. And once those improvements are in place, we should be all set with Phase One. So really, I know one of your selectmen is related to one of the big vocal outspoken critics of the point, but I'm here really to answer any questions any might have about this system.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Park. We usually don't have conversation. We usually don't have conversations back and forth during the public input section of our meetings, but I appreciate you coming forward and sharing that update with the board. And we'll certainly have the administration follow up with you with respect to the plans that you mentioned. And then maybe we can schedule a time at a future meeting to have you come back and if there's any more updates to share or if there are any specific questions from the board.
Yes, I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can still hear me. I'm happy to respond to any questions, even from those who are cynical of what we've done and how we are handling the sewer flow. I will send you a small technical memo in the next couple of days, kind of explains those findings. You know, not only have we had independent engineers review every component of the plant over the last 90 days, we've also had independent engineers like Alan Majors review the entire sewage collection system, verify grades and pipe sizes. Not that we've ever expect, you know, assumed that it was a cause of the, on the backup Building C, but because we wanted to put to rest all these false claims and sort of malicious statements about our project. But I am always accessible. I will be glad to forward our email, even my cellphone, to anyone who wishes to meet up there. I'm happy to personally meet with anybody, whether it's the board, the town administrator, or DPW, or even a community member, walk them through why some of the claims that are being out there are just false. But, Ford, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Park. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public input, Mr. Layden?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next we are on to member updates. We'll start with Mr. DeCoste.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You kind of stole my thunder. I just wanted to say thank you to all the residents. We had 1,486 residents come out on Saturday to vote, which equates to about 20% of the electorate. And I just wanted to say thank you very much to everybody that did come out to all the candidates that did put themselves out there and run to volunteer their time and services to the community. Also wanted to, I want to scale you a thunder. If you're going to do something for the Friends of the Veterans, Cindy, are you doing something on that?
Yes, the drive they're having right now?
I'll leave that.
Go with it, Chuck. Go ahead.
I gotta pull it back up on my phone now. Sorry. So the Friends of Littleton Veterans are collecting items for, exactly, for a resident of ours who's been deployed to Camp Lemagnier in Djibouti in Africa. English is my second language here. But he's stationed right now near Somalia. And the friends are collecting at either the VFW or at Shaker Lane School a number of items. I'm just going to read them off real quickly, but this is also posted on the Friends page on Facebook, I believe. So washcloths, hand towels, coffee, coffee filters, sweeteners, creamers, gum, hard candy, Haribo in particular. I think those are those cute commercials where they say, "I can make an airplane." Let's see, different single-use spices and hot sauces, books, magazines, personal hygiene products, baby powder, foot powder, batteries, playing cards, sunscreen, and bug spray. So those are items that can be dropped off, and they're going to be shipped over to Michael Bach, who's with the US Navy. And again, he's Littleton resident, his family's here, so, you know, trying to take care of our own. And Maureen Woods is coordinating this, so if you have any questions, you can, you can drop them off at the Dropbox at the VFW after 3:00 PM, or you can drop them off at the Shaker Lane School when they are open. And actually, I'll post this on my Facebook page as well. If anybody has any questions, they can just reach out to me. I don't want to give out Maureen's cellphone number over this meeting. But great opportunity for us to give back to those that give so much and, you know, spending time away from their family. And Mike Bach and his wife are generous enough to do this, and he gets all these products out, you know, amongst the troops that he's stationed with, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Knox?
I'm also. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Glavy? I don't know if Paul's still with us. Mr. Nordhaus?
I'm still with you. Sorry.
Oh, you are? Sorry.
Just by way of explanation, folks, I had my second shot today. Doing great, but I'm a little tired, so that's why I'm on blackout and not as vocal, and I may fade off at some point, but go get your shots. Get your shots, Littleton.
Thank you. Mr. Nordhaus?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So two things. I attended the COA Housing Subcommittee and the COA Board meetings this week, and they discussed the senior-focused warrant articles to support. And I think they're going to submit a statement about that. And then if you've been watching LCTV, I heard it on a special edition of The Highlight Show with Marin to discuss warrant articles, so now I'm internet famous. And then at our Housing Authority meeting last week, the residents of Pine Tree Park are really eager to, for Littleton to get out of the red because they really want to open their common room. They have been without social interaction for more than a year now. You know, they really need a sense of community. I hope that can, that can come quickly. I would urge all the residents to please mask up so that you can get out of the red. And then finally, we also voted to have, there was some concern about the accessibility of these planters, beautiful vegetable gardens that Ben Kane built for his Eagle Scout project, about whether or not they were accessible. And we agreed that we needed to check it out. And because it's the Housing Authority, they are going to actually have a civil engineer come and do a study, and the state is going to pay for it, to try to make sure that those planters are accessible. It should be great for everybody. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't know what I have. So I guess the only thing I can share with the board is working with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We actually put together, Laura Yates has been amazing working with me. We put together a summary of accomplishments of the master plan that have been achieved to date. It's a pretty extensive list, so we're hoping to do some form of presentation at town meeting. Exactly what that will be, we don't know yet, just because it's logistically difficult with it being outside at Alumni Fields, but certainly looking to have some handouts for residents and maybe just a brief, quick presentation just to acknowledge as well as the many residents that have volunteered on the master plan report when it was put together, as well as those that have worked on the implementation of the master plan since that committee was established. So looking forward to finalizing that and having that to share with the board and the residents as well. It's very, in my opinion, it's pretty impressive. I think, as I've mentioned before, I've learned in my travels that many towns have a master plan, or if they do, they're not actually implementing it. So Littleton is very much ahead of the game in that respect, and we should, we should be proud of ourselves and those who will continue to work hard to do better for Littleton, so. Thank you. That's all I have. And next on the agenda, we have, oh, we have appointment, we actually have, this is regarding the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisor Committee. There was somebody appointed to that committee. Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Insali?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Actually, we did get the resignation today.
Okay.
To the board, does he not need to take any action on this and assign police control?
Okay, great. Excellent. All right, good. So the next thing on the agenda is we have a joint meeting with the Personnel Committee. A little bit, running a little bit behind. That was scheduled for 7:10. So if we can take a minute to bring up those members, bring forward those members.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you so much for meeting with us.
Certainly.
And I was wondering in what direction that you wanted to go?
If you wanted to, Anita, as Chair of the Personnel Committee, if you wanted to start the discussion, I know that there's been a few meetings recently amongst the Personnel Committee and some of the town employees, and maybe if you could bring the board up to speed on what those discussions were and any concerns or thoughts about the proposed bylaw that we have on the warrant article.
Okay, I'll do the best that I can. The Personnel Board met on May 6th with all employees to discuss the proposed changes to the bylaw going away and the Personnel Board going away, and listen to the concerns that the employees had. And I would like to publicly thank all of the employees that attended the meeting. There were 38. We had a little glitch. The first day we were supposed to have it. The internet was down, so we had to postpone it to the second day. I would also like to thank Chuck DeCoste for joining in the meeting. Was very much appreciative to have him there. Some of the concerns and the employees have is that they think that this is very fast and without any chance for them to know exactly what's going on and why it's happening. Joe Layden did give a brief explanation as to why he thought the proposal was to do away with the board as well as the bylaw. I want everyone to understand that if the bylaw is voted down, that means Personnel Board also goes away because it was set up through the Personnel bylaw itself. Employees' concerns are that they really didn't know what was going on until they heard it through one of your meetings that it was a proposal. They haven't had any meetings to discuss it, or be told. They're afraid of losing the benefits that they have now. They feel that with the bylaw, everything goes to town meeting, but the proposed handbook, that can be changed by just a few people. And although they think that change is good, change works much better if everybody has the ability to participate in the change. And they were pretty much asking if there was a way that this process could be slowed down. They don't have a lot of trust at the moment, and I believe their concerns are there's been so many changes in the town hall over the last couple of years between personnel and things going, changes going on. And now this is one more big thing, that they will lose their bylaw, which non-union employees feel is like a union contract for them, even though it isn't. They feel that the town meeting decides what they, what changes are made. And they don't want to see that go away. They feel confident in that. And I know, Chuck, you listened to the meeting, and I just wondered if you might have some comments about how you felt about the meeting?
Madam Chair, you okay with that?
Yeah, I do, I do want to respond to Anita about how we got to this point.
Sure.
So, so Anita, this, we, the Select Board asked Town Council to take a look at our Personnel bylaw. As you know, and as you mentioned in your statement, there's been some issues recently with, there's been some personnel issues at Town Hall. And currently, there was, you know, a significant issue with one of the departments and one of the employees in that department, which really caused some concerns to the Select Board. And, you know, currently, we have had a complaint filed against the town. And there were some things that transpired that led up to some issues that did arise in that department. So as a result of that situation specifically, we asked Town Council to take a look at our Personnel bylaw. Our Personnel bylaw was created in 1974. I think it's been updated frequently since that time. I think the most significant change happened in the 80s. And our town has changed a lot since then. We now have a professional HR staff onboard. We have Bridget Bell, who we've hired. And so we do have professional staff in place now with a professional HR department, which is something I think the town did not have at the time that the Personnel bylaws were created. It's my understanding, reading the packet this evening, that the information, the bylaw itself has now been incorporated into the person, into the employee handbook. It seems to me that everything's pretty much carried over into that. And as a counterpoint, I think employees need to understand is, yeah, so the bylaw does need to be changed by the voters at town meeting, but that can go both ways. So the Personnel Board and the Select Board and the town administrator might come up with something that they want to propose to the residents, but there's nothing to stop the residents from making an amendment on town meeting floor to undo what the original intention was of the bylaw. So it's not necessarily that having it go before the voters of Littleton for approval is a good thing in some respects. Certainly, there's many, you know, employees being afraid of their benefits and other things like that. You would mention they're afraid of losing benefits. It's pretty clear with reading what's in the handbook that all of that information's been carried over into the handbook. Itself, there's certainly, you know, not going to take away anybody's benefits or anything like that. That's not the intention of this at all. It's really just modernizing our town hall and our town departments, and specifically, this bylaw is part of that modernization. And it is a recommendation from Town Council. We did have them review it. We didn't say anything to them. We said, "Here it is. Please give us your thoughts." And Donna Brewer came back very specifically saying that there was many things in there that she was concerned about from a legal standpoint, and it was her recommendation that we move forward with this course of action that we're taking now as a Select Board. I know that there's been numerous meetings. I was looking at the Personnel agendas. And actually, a lot of the minutes haven't been posted, so I couldn't read the actual minutes. But according to the agendas of the Personnel Committee, this has been on the agenda for your meetings for the whole, all month of April and March. And so I know at those meetings that Town Council was present, that in-town employees were invited to those meetings. Donna Brewer attended one of your meetings, according to the agenda.
Donna Brewer, Donna Brewer in Town Council hasn't been to any of our Personnel Board meetings.
Okay, because it was, okay, because it was on an agenda, so maybe they didn't end up appearing? I'm just going by the agenda because I didn't have any minutes to read. So I'm just going by what I'm seeing on the agendas that were posted.
Madam Chair, could I, I've been to one of that.
Could I just respond to a couple of your comments, Madam Chair, before it gets lost in the shuffle? The Personnel bylaw that we're living under now was voted at town meeting in 2006. It was Lyndon Up and Kathy Coughlin and I that presented it. And it was adapted that night, and there have been amendments made since then, every so often, every year. We, and I'm not here to defend the fact that the Personnel Board is doing good. I'm here to defend the employees and how they feel. And the reason in 2006 that it was put, we took it to town meeting was because we were never given, I was an employee at that time, and we were never given raises or benefits, but unions always did. So by going to the town meeting and proposing the bylaw, we put it in the hands of the taxpayers, whether we got a raise, whether we got a benefit going forward, rather than have just a couple of people or just a finance committee or a selectman saying, "Well, we don't have any money left to give to you people." That was the initial reason for doing this.
Is that like the class and compensation study?
That's perfect.
Okay.
That's one section of it, yes.
Yeah.
And we, I can say as the chairman, we never invited Town Council or anyone to come to our meetings on anything to do with any of this. I had asked, I had sent an email asking Joe to put it in the packet for me. Um I had asked, I had sent an email asking Joe to and put it in the packet for me so that we could have a joint meeting and we didn't get an answer for that. So I decided that because employees were saying to me, what's going on? I don't know what's happening, what's going on? That I had the Personnel Board meet with all employees just to get the impact of what they were feeling. And I was so excited that Mr. Decost could be there to hear all the comments. Um just because it's important for the employees to be, to feel safe, to feel comfortable in where they're going every day. And right now, they don't. And um I don't know what will happen. One of the thoughts that our board, some of our board members had after this meeting that we had on the sixth was, maybe it would be a good idea if we pulled back a little bit, put the brakes on and maybe put this back on the warrant in September and the Personnel Board along with the Selectmen and the HR Department finish vetting the handbook and work together on how we could make this a better product for everybody to accept.
Mm-hmm.
But we did not take an official vote on that. Um we were waiting to hear what happened tonight and then we were going to meet on the nineteenth and have another discussion and decide then. But that's one of the things that we were thinking of asking and I I'll put that back out tonight, that some of us would like to see if that can happen.
Okay. I appreciate that, Anita. I'm definitely going to follow back up on that. Mr. Glady?
Yeah, uh thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize uh for uh just choosing to be at the blacked out screen here. And as far as appreciate Chuck was able to make the second day meeting. I was there. I had made time uh to be available for the original scheduled meeting. Most of the Personnel Committee meetings and the Select have been the Selectman's appointee to it since last summer, replacing uh Selectman Knox. Uh unfortunately, a scheduled uh convenient for uh work employees hours, but not for those of us who uh have to volunteer our time. But the the topic has been discussed openly repeatedly long before um with the March and April dates that you mentioned, Madam Chair. It goes back to last fall. In fact, it goes back in planning far earlier than that when we had retirements in the Treasurer's uh office. Uh the plan was to add an HR Director there and the conversations you mentioned with Attorney Brewer out of Council's office uh were a logical outgrowth of that. I'll tell you, since being on board with the Personnel Committee last summer and experiencing some of the Personnel uh horror shows we've had in the past couple of years, I'm very confident that we now have an HR professional in-house. And uh the transition away from what once upon a time was the proper way to do business with the committee uh is uh to a professional in-house HR uh Director with a uh revamped uh employee handbook is the is the prudent way to go. And you know, fighting the trend toward professionalism is not uh is not the way for Littleton to go. And in fact, our board, our board being the Personnel Committee, voted six to one in favor of this article before there were some second thoughts in people's minds. In all the prior meetings, there was multiple opportunities and there in fact, those opportunities were acted on by members of the committee to meet directly with Town Hall staff to go over versions of the language here. And I and I distinctly remember uh uh Council being on our meeting. Now, may if it wasn't a Personnel Committee meeting, exclusive Personnel Committee meeting, it may well have been at the joint meeting we had between the Selectmen and the Personnel Committee a couple of months ago. Uh but guidance has been coming directly from Town Council's office on this. It's been battered about in its form for months, several months, and it's been voted on by our committee. What's what's new and recent and rushed here is the reversal of what the path we had been on. So um getting it done right is the important thing. And if people feel they need to have proper time to get more input, fine. But I know on a number of our meetings, we've had a number of employees uh tune in through Zoom. You can see who's on board and that's great. Uh you know, so there's always been an opportunity to to speak up um along the way. And this has been a very open and uh and at this point, a pretty thorough process, but I'll defer to the board on what direction we want to go on.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Mr. Decost now because I cut you off.
You didn't cut me off. I just, that's through the chair, that's all. Um so uh I did attend the meeting and uh Anita's summary was was accurate. There were a number of uh members, uh number of number of employees uh attended the Zoom. And um Anita did a great job of letting everybody be heard and it was good for me to hear it. And I think that is kind of the 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 message, the biggest message that I got was um employees want to be heard. And I think that's uh something that we can accomplish, whether we move forward with this with this bylaw, we don't move forward with this bylaw. One of the things that I've thought about after the meeting on Thursday was ways that we can communicate better with our employees. And I think I'm complicit here because uh I think Tim Michalski mentioned something about, you know, that during the whole pandemic and and um you know, it's been a tough almost year and a half now for everybody. Um I hadn't walked around the offices and you know, much of that was because we were in lockdown from COVID, but I haven't checked in or sent emails out to very many of the employees to say, hey, how you doing? Thanks for doing what you're doing. I do think that the Select Board has shown our appreciation and and something that um Anita just mentioned was that the employees um don't feel safe, I think, is what you said, Anita, coming to work. And I I I want to assure all employees that they are a highly valued asset of the Select Board. Um that you know, it's our employees are are bread and butter, if you will, you know, so they're they're the ones that um are doing the excellent. We have the administration that lays out what the X's and O's are, but the the employees are truly the ones that are on the field getting it done. Um so I I want everybody to know that they are appreciated by the Select Board. One of the things that I wanted to propose to the board as a result of uh what I witnessed on Thursday and from some of this conversation tonight was perhaps we have a liaison to the employees because to Anita's point, um there is no union rep. There is, you know, the 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 i- in some ways, the um the representatives of the employees at the Personnel Board are kind of like their representatives, their union reps, if you will. So um that could be something we could discuss as a board, that we have a liaison from the board to the employees. And I know that we have liaisons to any number of you know, boards and commissions and and whatnot, but that might be something that can try to improve the communication so that the voice of the employee is better heard. So that when we do our member updates, we can say, the employees have noticed that the dental plan isn't the same that, you know, or whatever it is. I did just throwing that out there, but um as as far as the handbook is concerned, there's there's going to be, I think Mr. Wilson stated it best on Thursday, it's going to be a living, breathing document. It's going to be something that's going to change all the time. Joe did a really good job of saying, yeah, there's there's people are kind of concerned and and worried about this eighty-some odd page document being the Employee Handbook. Um and I think Mr. Schmidt mentioned that there were there are some flaws and and some holes in it. What we're operating under right now has giant holes in it. And the fact that we've got a professional human resources team, uh Frank, it's a team of three. Joe is technically the Director of that department. Bridget's the um Department Head and Val is um has fit in quite nicely, I think, uh if if I ask Bridget should should agree with that. So um there was a lot of concern from employees and towards the end of the meeting, a a lot of folks were saying, you know, the whole pump the brakes thing, you know, maybe maybe we do reevaluate this, have an employee session, you know, whether we do it at the the high school auditorium and and let employees show up and have a a non-threatening conversation. You know, this is just a communication session where they can be heard. And you know, whether that's the case between now and town meeting or if it's something that we try to set up on an annual basis, so that folks can uh airing of grievances or something like that. I think it was on Seinfeld, right? So um I think that's pretty much it. It was it was good to be on the meeting and and hear from everybody. Um I do concur with a lot of what Mr. Glady said as far as um there were a lot of opportunities. This has been, you know, it's not like we we just rolled this out and and we we want to shove it down anybody's throat. Not at all. This is something that has been discussed uh or on agenda on many um many meetings, not just from the Personnel Board, but also on the Select Board and Joint Meetings. So um I look forward to working towards something that the employees are comfortable with and making sure that they do feel heard. And and I think communication is a big part of that. And um I'd even I'd even step up. If we wanted to do some sort of liaison type of situation, I'd even step up and and offer to do that on on behalf of the the Select Board for this first year, just to kind of as a trial run to see if that's something that might work out.
Okay. Thank you. I know that um I I just wanted to follow up on the liaison I idea, Chuck. I was actually thinking, um and this is something that Donna Brewer had mentioned in her conversation, and I think thinking back now to Paul's point, I think Anita, the meeting I'm thinking about was the joint meeting with the Select Board. It wasn't a Personnel Board. It was a joint meeting we had. And Donna Brewer was present at that. That's what I'm thinking of. Um but maybe we, one of the suggestions that Donna had made was to create a Personnel um Board Advisory Committee. And she was very specific about the makeup of that committee, um that it would be a three-member committee appointed by the Select Board with direct HR experience. Um and so that was something that she had she had mentioned was a possibility as well. Um so that's something that we could have more discussion about um to just build off Chuck's, you know, idea about the liaison. That might be a, in my mind, maybe a better alternative is to form to to a form an advisory committee like that. And maybe that would make the employees feel a little bit more comfortable about this transition. Um so I'm just going to put that out there, but I know that Sandy Clyde has her hand raised.
Yes. Hi, Madam Chair. Um I just have one clarification and um sorry, I'm a little nervous, so I might sound a little abrasive and I that's not my intent. So all due respect. Please bear with me. Um it the the part that the employees didn't understand at first was that um in changing the bylaw, there the section of the bylaw that has their benefits in it will no longer be protected by the bylaw. It is now po- it would become policy in the handbook that can be changed anytime um anytime during the year by the Town Administrator or the Select Board with the Select Board's approval. The only piece that needs to go in front of town meeting would be the compensation classification, which is your dollar amounts. But vacation time, holidays, all of that right now is protected by the bylaw.
Okay.
Whereas if it in the new transition to the bylaw, that be just becomes policy. And it's no longer protected.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy, for that clarification. That makes sense. Okay.
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Sure. Yes.
That was a very big indicator when people started calling me um and asking me what was going on before we even had the meeting on the sixth. That was their biggest concern. And that's the part when I said they feel um the non-union people feel protected by that bylaw.
Okay.
And part of part of the thing that I I've thought of that would be a very good idea is if we if we could postpone this and sit with the HR Department and Town Council if need be and have a discussion as to the pieces of the bylaw that really belong under the guides of HR. Because there are a lot of section in there that are HR issues that we would deal with because there wasn't a a big HR department. But now there is, and I can see that flowing directly into HR. Having been on the board or being involved since two thousand and six, I've seen a lot of up and down, up and down, up and down. And I see right now um going forward, we have been get started to vet the handbook and find errors in the handbook that we've been able to send to Town Council and they've accepted. So that's working well to fix those things. And if there was a way that we could have an advisory board and then have the Personnel bylaw to include the benefits that the employees feel comfortable with along with the comp plan, and then the rest of the the rest of the HR issues would go to HR. But I don't know how to propose that to take to town meeting by June twelfth.
Right.
And I haven't proposed that and taken a vote at the board at our board, but I know that Mr. Wilson has has discussed with us that um we could do some kind of advisory board and work with HR. We still have the whole Gov HR issue that hasn't been resolved, that we've been working very strongly with Joe and Anthony and Bridget, and there's a lot more work to be done. So if we're allowed to continue to do that and to re- readjust this bylaw, we could come out with a really good product to work with the employees with this group that Chuck uh Mr. Decost is thinking about.
Right. Um Anita, so I'm glad that you you elaborated on the the concerns of the employees specifically with respect to the benefits. Um that information is very helpful. Certainly, um I read through the handbook um and I myself have some areas that I'd like to maybe have a little bit more information on, um some things that I think need require further discussion. So I agree with you and the employees in that regard. Um and certainly what you just proposed as far as getting together with HR, with Town Council, with the employees, and maybe having a little bit more of um an in-depth conversation about this to make the employees more comfortable. Certainly, what you brought up about the benefits is I I can fully appreciate where they're coming from with respect to that. That makes sense to me. Um so we can talk to definitely as a board about now that we I know Joe Layden has his hands up, his hand up too, um about how we want to move forward. Um certainly as far as postponing um this at this time and and maybe not moving forward with the bylaw change as proposed at town meeting this spring um and doing a little bit more work and and revisiting it in the fall. So I'm going to um let Mr. Layden speak and then I'll get some comments from the board and see how they feel about that. Go ahead, Mr. Layden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Um I just want to raise for for not only um uh the board and the Personnel Board, but then also uh to everyone in attendance. Um uh specifically regarding as far as benefits. And that's where, you know, I think I think it's understandable that we um can can understand in each other's shoes as far as how that that may view and and some of the benefits are safety. Uh but did want to reiterate and reiterated during that Personnel Board um that, you know, when it comes to benefits, uh one um there's existing case law that limits what we can do so that um you know, if we have existing benefits, there's a lot of things. We can't just uh change on a whim. Um and you know, I say that just in a way to also give staff some some level of of uh security as well because um uh you know, with unions, with non-union employees to just arbitrarily change benefits. That's just something legally that we can't do. Um and all things, you know, we end up proposing and discussing, um you know, I was looking uh through the agenda packets with Personnel Board. We've been discussing since February uh many of these things. So um look forward to the opportunity to continue that discussion, but also want to make sure that um you know, there can then be another uh discussion, especially with staff to know that um you know benefits that people identify as um uh you know, within the bylaw, if they get wrapped into Personnel uh Employee Handbook, those are still protected, that there is case law that um identifies what towns and municipalities can and can't do. And I think that's also important for people to realize.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Layden.
Madam Chair, if I can just add, oh, I know this is a benefit. This is an important subject, I know, to the Personnel Board, but I think of employees. So I um I you know, I I think that so one thing that wasn't discussed is really the um issues, if an employee has an issue and how that gets resolved, resolution um and and things like that. Um I think it's going to become more and more important uh to have some type of you know, sensing sessions or or things. you know, sensing sessions or things to really try to have, be in tune with the employees as, as we, regardless of what happens. Um, and it's something probably that the Personnel Board, we really didn't even do. It was more of hearing employee issues as opposed to maybe cultivating, you know, good and bad from employees on a quarterly basis or something that the management team could really get down into the weeds. Um, realizing that some employees aren't comfortable speaking with their managers. And that was probably one reason why, at least in that, uh, respect, why employees were more comfortable with a Personnel Board. Um, so, you know, I, I just think there's, there's value here, whether, you know, this gets changed over in June. Um, I think there's some room for growth that we definitely have to address. Um, and I, and I will fall back a little bit. Uh, earlier in the year, when we say that we voted, uh, six to one, um, I think a lot of discussion happened after that vote. It was probably a little bit premature, but we were trying to, I think, get ahead of, um, you know, the warrant, and that shifted on us as well. But, um, it was really the employees and meeting with employees that kind of brought all this, some of this to the forefront that we realized, you know, we need to address, um, some of these issues, hopefully before June to put at least the employees at ease and then let, let the town vote, but also kind of gave us some ideas of some things that we would like to see added, that has been added. And maybe give Bridgette and her team, uh, a little bit of insight on what employees are, are looking for and what they're going, what their needs are going to be going forward. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I make another comment?
Sure. And then I'm going to hear from the board. Go ahead.
I'll end it very quickly. Um, a lot of the things that the Personnel Board has done in the past is, um, we listen to what the employees say and give them direction. I mean, we can't tell them what's right or wrong. We try to make them feel comfortable where they can go and talk to the people that they need to talk to. But they feel, they felt like the, um, Personnel Board has been a security blanket where they can, you know, yell and scream and holler and then go from there to where they need to go to get their, their answers and their questions. And I would hate to see that go away right away without what I proposed that we could possibly do. So thank you for listening tonight. I really appreciate it.
Certainly. I'm going to open up to the board, Mr. Nordhaus.
Thank you. Um, uh, just a couple of quick comments. I am, there's no, I, I don't think there's any reason to rush this. And if people are hesitant, that's a great reason to, to like build some consensus. Um, I do think that something Mr. Glavy said resonated me, with me, which is that, you know, let's not roll back a, a, a march towards professionalism. I, I don't think that, that the town meeting is a good place to like legislate, you know, policy changes for employees. I think that a professional HR department is where you go for that. Every place that I've worked to, uh, Ms. Harding's just comment, like if I have to complain and yell and scream or cry, I go to the HR Department. And that's always the way it's been. And i- i- if it's a professional HR department, that is what they are for. So once again, like I'm not discounting anybody's concerns, but I do think that, um, building a professional, you know, administration team here in town is only going to be a positive impact in the long run.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Knox, did you have anything to add?
Just quickly, um, as a former member of that Personnel Committee, I know the time and effort that they put in all the time and for the benefit of the employees. And I think Mr. DeCoste hit it on the, on the head, where we as selectmen do, do value our employees in a very high honor. And we certainly, with this handbook, the intention is to have them protected even more. Uh, I've read through it. It's not the kind of reading I like to go through. I've told Mr. Schmidt this many times when I was on the board. But I, I think I have no problem if we slow down a bit and take the, the handbook as written, let the employees, um, take a look at it in more detail, have us take a look at it in more detail and work something out. And even if it doesn't happen in June, it can happen in the fall. But I think the handbook is meant to be there to help things out so our professional HR department can then in the future handle these things. So I think maybe a slowdown or maybe a postponement, I have no problem with. I think after what's been talked about tonight and the amount of time we have between now and town meeting, I don't think there's enough time to work someone this out. So, um, my suggestion would be to try to put it off. Uh, but, but I want to stress that I think the handbook is there, uh, headed to have us heading the right direction. So it's a more professional, uh, type of department where people can go to.
Uh huh. I agree. Okay. So, Mr. Glavy?
No, that's, that's fine with me. As I said earlier, I, I think we were, uh, you know, until, um, you know, a week or two ago, we didn't even have a, an indication that there was, uh, any resistance. We had plenty of, uh, plenty of time spent giving members of the committee a chance to, uh, you know, to go out and work on pieces of it. But if it requires more time, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer. That's, you know, we want consensus on this. So let's just take the time that's necessary.
Okay. I agree. How do you feel about that, Mr. DeCoste?
Yeah, I also agree. I do think, um, I, I, I do like the idea that, uh, I think Mr. Wilson had mentioned it a while, well, I think it was like last Thursday or Friday, we were kind of recapping Personnel Board meeting and then I guess, uh, Attorney Brewer mentioned it as well, a three-member board. I think that would be a great, um, a great asset for Bridgette to have some colleagues, I guess, professionals in the HR field to bounce stuff off an advisory, uh, committee to, whether it's to her, to the HR Department, or I guess it would be to Joe as the, uh, the Assistant Town Administrator slash Director of HR. But everything else I think is, is, I, I do think we should listen to the employees, um, kind of pump the brakes a little bit and, and see if we can get that consensus so that, um, you know, we want every employee to feel like they want to be at work every day. We don't want them
Right.
harassing us when they're driving to work every day. So if there's, if there's any areas where folks are feeling some angst or just discomfort going to work, thinking that we're trying to strip them of, whether it be benefits or powers or, you know,
Right.
we want to empower them. We don't want to strip any power from them. So, yeah, I, I think we're on the right path.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So that's what we'll do then. We'll, um, we'll postpone this, Anita. Um.
Own the article?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then that, maybe bring it, maybe we can plan going forward after town meeting to start having meetings together?
Yes.
Okay, that, that would be terrific.
Yeah. And that's what we'll do. We'll regroup after town meeting, but we're going to postpone it for now. Um, and we'll move forward in a more constructive manner because we certainly, to emphasize what all my fellow Select Board members said, certainly, our intent here was to make things better and to empower the employees, certainly not to make them feel uncomfortable and, you know, to make them feel unsafe at work is the last thing that we want to do. Um, and it's also to empower Bridgette. You know, we're very fortunate to have her on staff, um, and just to strengthen her role and the HR Department as a whole. Um, and just to make employees feel more comfortable and, and to make things better and move things forward. Um, so that's what we'll do. And then we'll regroup after town meeting and we'll, we'll figure out how we're going to structure this and, um, move forward, um, together and, and work it out.
I appreciate, Madam Chair, you letting us have this meeting tonight. And I'm sure the employees will look forward to working with all of us to come up with something that's going to work better.
Yep. Absolutely. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. So next on the agenda is town website, website improvements. For the Select Board, this is something that I put together, um, after talking. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting. Um, was that last week, Chuck, or the week before? It was a really great meeting. Um, but one of the things that we were just talking about were, um, some better ways to, ways to improve our website to, to be a little bit more friendly. Um, especially from the business perspective. I know, um, that Anthony and Mr. Layden have had some of these discussions as well. Um, and, you know, we're hoping to have a EDC Director maybe come on board through some grant funding, I believe, Mr. Enzaldi. Is that correct?
So we're still waiting to hear the state guidelines on the APRA funds, which is the latest federal stimulus package. So that would be an opportunity to, um, create a position that can work with businesses and help them through what's available currently with all the various, um, uh, PPP forgiveness loan notes and, and, uh, Small Business Association, uh, loan programs and what have you. And also help develop what we need to come back is our, uh, commercial tax base. So this person would, um, really focus on those two areas, which is, um, so what, you know, coming through this that we have a, a good commercial base to look forward to.
Okay. So I, I don't know, Mr. Layden, if you can possibly share some of the slides that I included in the packet. What I wanted, what I was hoping to accomplish tonight was just to share my thoughts with the Select Board, get your input. Um, and these are just quick little things. And there were some examples from some other communities that maybe something that we could just do in the short term, um, to help local businesses, you know, through our town website. So. Can you share that, Mr. Layden, or?
Joe, you're on mute.
I always remember just as far as like I'm, I'm in the process of sharing the screen and then have to go back and unmute myself.
Okay. Um, so this is one thing that jumped out at me and you can see my notes here too. Um, on the, the Visit Littleton page, we have two videos. Um, we have the Welcome to Littleton video, which is the one that was narrated by Mark Roy. Um, and then we have the other one that was the Economic Development Committee video that had been put together. I think it would be great if we could maybe get this onto the homepage of the town website. Um, it's kind of hard to find here. I know that other communities have their Welcome to Littleton video right on their homepage. So that was one of the suggestions that I had for the board tonight. And really we need to decide which video. We have two um, that are very similar, um, but maybe just picking one and using it, um, instead of having two, did seem a little bit redundant of one another. I know that the Economic Development Committee worked very hard on their video. Um, I'm not sure the history behind the one, um, created by, narrated by, uh, Mark Roy, but they're very similar in content. Um, the other, um, thing about the, about Littleton, and this is something that I took from another community to, for future reference maybe is I thought it was really great. They break it down into four areas, economic development, history and culture, quality of life and community services, which I found just to be very helpful, um, for that community, but maybe something that we could consider um, for Littleton as well. Um, the Littleton Business Association is right at the top, as you can see, um, under Visit Littleton, which I found odd to have it placed there. Um, and really maybe bring that to the Four Businesses page seemed to be a better spot to have that located, um, as, as opposed to under Visit Littleton. And then if you could just scroll up a little bit, Mr. Layden, um, and then just the page itself, it seemed like there was a lot, large gaps in between content. I don't know. It's probably just the way the page is formatted. Not sure what we can do about that. But we have building. Should we change that to, um, change to building and to, wait, from building, change to building and planning or permitting? Um, EDC, can we spell out economic development? Uh, you know, some people might not understand what EDC stands for. Um, and then un, under economic development, have Welcome to Littleton. Information about our Economic Development Committee. Then information about the Littleton Business Association, the tax rate, water, electricity and water rates, and then transportation. I thought might be better suited if we just kind of reorganized where those things are located. Um, if you could go down, Mr. Layden. Or the next slide, I don't even know how I shared this. Um, change resources to business resources and move other, um, business certificates to business resources. And then that's where I was talking about the content. If there's just a way to maybe just reformat that, I don't know if it's possible, but it just seems like, um, there's just missing content. And that's where I was saying, like, under business certificates for other, just move it over to, over to resources and change resources to business resources, just to be a little bit more specific. And then maybe under About Littleton, include, um, the master plan there as well, as long as, and move the Open Space and Recreation Plan and Housing Production Plan to About Littleton. It seems like they're a little bit misplaced where they're located right now. Um, and if you could just scroll down or up or whatever, that's just a blank page. That's me. Um, and so there was just some outdated things too, like on the town website, I saw like National Takeback, um, Drug Takeback Day, that's already passed. Um, maybe we can just do a better job of just getting rid of some obsolete events, um, on the town website. And then if we could just scroll up um, oh, under Planning Board, it's under Departments. Should that be moved to Boards and Committees as opposed to being under Departments? Um, and should procurement and bids be moved to the Planning and Permitting Department? Um, and Diane already did take care of this as regarding election news and updates, um, should be on the homepage of the town's website. Um, that was something that I didn't see when I first typed that in. So I think, I think that's all set. I think. But I could be mistaken. I don't know. We're past that now anyways. Can you, um, scroll up some more, Mr. Layden? Um, and then on this one, for the Fire Department and to Police Department, should we change Public Safety to Public Health and Safety? Um, and then maybe Littleton information, um, about the vi, the virus, it's been buried in the website. Should that be on the homepage? But hopefully we're coming out of this pandemic anyways. Um, and then the strategic plan for public safety, I wasn't really clear on what that tab is for. Um, there's just some random information there that seems a little bit outdated. So I wasn't sure what that was about, if that was something that we could maybe take a closer look at. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that I had shared. Oh, and this is just an example from AIR, which I thought was pretty cool. They've got this whole Citizens Action Center, which everything is right there. Um, I thought that was pretty neat, the way it was formatted. And then I used Grafton as an example as well. Um, you can see right there, they've got direct links to Twitter and other social media pages for the town. Um, and they've got a special social media tab, which I, I don't believe that we do for our town website. And then if you could just scroll up a little bit more, I don't know if I used, shared another example or not. Oh, and that, this is the other thing too, like Shop Local with the EDC, I thought was pretty cool. Um, just to have something on there. Maybe we could do something like that now to help with the Economic Development Committee. Um, and then if you scroll up a little bit more, they've got all these businesses that are listed right underneath there um, that are easy to find, which I thought might be a way to help local businesses now. Um, if we had a specific tab, um, for Shop Local with the EDC. I don't know if there's anything more that I shared. No. So that was it. So that was one of the goals of the Select Board was to, for some, um, website improvements. Um, so I just figured I would just go through that. Like I said, after meeting with the Economic Development Committee, just trying to see how we can utilize our website a little bit better, um, specifically for that purpose to help that group. So I just want to share with the board, give you a chance to look at it, see if you had any thoughts or anything that you wanted to share as well. Um, go ahead, Matthew, and I see Diane has her hand up.
Thank you. Um, so I think that those suggestions are all sensible. And, um, I've been working with Diane and Nancy and, and, and we came up with some ideas for changes as well. Um, and I was, I guess, I, I, you know, I took this on and I didn't follow up, but one of the reasons was they, they felt like quick ad hoc fixes and they don't really solve the root of the problem. They're Band-Aids. It doesn't mean we shouldn't do them, but the cost. It doesn't mean we shouldn't do them, but the cost of um trying to address them that way really, really adds up. Um, but you know, I think that Diane and Nancy and I agree, the website has all the information, but people really struggle to find it. You know, they called Diane constantly looking for, asking her questions, looking for information that's already there. Um, and I heard the other day that Nancy has the Hound Departments to update their pages, which you you found like outdated information. And both of those situations are, I think, wasteful of town re- resources. Um, you know, making changes to the homepage, uh, everything we put on pushes something else off, and we don't know whether that change is going to end up being positive or just lead to more confusion. Um, so I think that really what I recognize is that I think the website needs a comprehensive approach to of a review, and we need to define users and behaviors and um we need to define, you know, the who the audience is, and I don't feel like this is a project for a Select Board. I'm I'm not a web expert, and with respect, nobody on this board is. We don't understand, you know, user experience and navigation, and I think that i- in the long run, it would be much more efficient if we found a way to hire a professional to make the website work properly for everybody who tries to use it. Um, so, you know, we can, we can discuss, I think your proposals are especially as they relate to economic development are fine, and they would, they would be reasonable changes. I I just fear that we're um starting down this path of constantly nitpicking things and making tiny changes which add up to a whole bunch of little stuff that doesn't really move anywhere and ends up just costing us a lot of time.
Okay, so Anthony, maybe you can answer this, because I know that the earlier on, and I'm not, and now then I'll get to Diane, too. Because there were changes that were made to the website a few years ago, right?
Correct. We uh, this was a brainy website back in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. We actually won an award where we converted all from our own website to this. But all the points that you make in each one of your made um some great points when you look at it. The website definitely needs to to be updated and no, I don't know if this is something where you adopt this as a goal, and then that filters down to the goals of Departments, because ultimately, each Department is responsible for keeping their page up. And I certainly discussed it, and it's going to be um something that will be one of their goals for each Department Head when we go through the unemployment performance reviews. That that's personally one of the goals that I think that we all need to work on. Um, you know, including this office as well. So in keeping our information fresh and current is really important. So if not sure if that's the route you want to go with and doing it there, um, yeah, or something else, we're happy to do it, but I think making some of the changes that Matthew's saying um sporadically kind of gets us to the point we are that we're in, because we'll say add something, and then we rarely ever take it down. So we just add it. And that point Cindy, that you brought up, you know, it still says Chief Matt King on there, you know, and so it's it's something that, you know, raises my blood pressure when I see something like that, because you know, she put ads in for three years already now, and
Right.
you know, we definitely need to do a better job on that.
Right, right. Um, Diane?
I'm not sure that Diane's gonna, she's remoting in, but she's remoting into to her empty office, so I I'm just trying to text her to see if she
She's a, I think she's a hacker.
Yeah.
She's pretty sure she's a hacker.
So she's got to try to log off and log back in.
Oh, okay.
She may need a minute.
Okay, um, it looks like she's coming in through her daughter's link. Um, yeah, I mean, the intention here was just to maybe there was just a few minor things I think that we could do in the short term without really disrupting the whole website and, you know, to Matthew's point, you know, having it an adverse impact somehow on the website as a whole, but I you know, I just think some of the the things that I suggested were just simple little fixes um that maybe we could do in the short term. I know personally, and I know that um other board members and to Diane's point, you know, the town clerk hear about it all the time from the public, frustration over the website. Um, so if there is something that we can do in the short term while we try to figure out a longer term solution, I think we should try to do that. Diane, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so um, I don't know if Mark can pull up um the what I what I had sent to him earlier. Um, I asked him if he could pull up a a model of what we we had sent back in February.
Joe's gonna get it for you, Diane.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so Cindy, this is what we had sent back in February.
Okay.
Changes that we had proposed um for for the website. Um, if you look, um, they're they're minor changes, but they're, you know, kind of big changes if you actually look at them.
Uh huh.
Um, so what our website looks like now, what what these changes will do. Um, uh, so if you look, the video will be on the first under the About, the video, history and a map. Under the uh, under the government, you'll see the town code, town meetings, town reports, elections. Under Departments, you'll have town departments, including police and fire. Um, under Boards and Committees, you'll have all Boards and Committees. And then you'll have um the EDC will be right there on the top under um Doing Business, Business Directory, EDC, uh, Transportation, Train, Opportunities, Permits, et cetera. And that, you know, so it's it's not a huge change, but it's a big change because it's, it'll be right on the, you know, the front page. Um, and then under the How Do I, it'll be links to applying for things, viewing things, paying, registering, and et cetera. And then that bottom line, those will all stay the same. So that's on um, you know, on the on the homepage, that second line underneath um underneath the um the picture, those those lines will all stay the same. And then where we have our uh calendar of events, that line will change and will have new tabs there. So I think that some of the things that you're looking for were changes that we had um talked to um Matthew about. Um, it's just a matter of actually implementing them. We we had talked about it, we had um had discussions about it, but no decision had been made. So, you know, Nancy had, you know, gone to the web um company and said, this is what we're looking for. He did a mockup. This is the mockup. It's just a matter of somebody saying, go with it. Um, I know you made a lot of changes, um, what you were looking to do, um, but, you know, nobody no decision was made, so we didn't make the changes. So it's just a matter of, you know, is this what you're actually looking for? Um, and and like Matthew said, each department is responsible for their information. Nancy is constantly, constantly sending out to each and every department, refresh what is on your page, you know? The amount of money that we spent to update this website was astronomical. When we launched it, we came to the Select Board and said, here's a training that we're going to offer to everybody and anybody that's townspeople, boards, come to us and we'll we'll do a training for you. Nobody took us up on it.
Right.
When we made that, when we made the changes, we went to the townspeople and asked them, what do you want to see on the on the website? Um, Matthew saw how many, how many responses we got. I think we got fifty responses, if that. So we made the changes to the website based on the residents' responses, which was hardly anything. And uh, the people that actually use the website all the time, which are the Boards and Committees and and the employees. So it's hard, you know, how do you make the changes to appease everybody when nobody responds to you? So, you know, we're the ones that make that use the website, so we're the ones that are trying to make it you know, uh, user-friendly, but we're not getting any feedback. And then when somebody, you know, somebody from the outside says, well, I can't use it. Okay, well, explain to us what you're looking for and and what you need to do to get to where you want to go, where you want to go. And where you want to go is two clicks away, but because you don't come to us and say, I don't understand your website, then you don't understand where where to go. And it's a lot easier to use when people understand. But it's because they don't understand the website that they don't know how to use it. So it's a lot easier to use, and the information is there. It's just that they don't understand where to look.
Right. So did you share that screen, previous screen with those proposed changes? I don't remember that coming to the board.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall on the sword here. This this was completely on me. And what happened was Nancy sent that back to me in February, and I never responded. And I, because, you know, my feeling was it was out of my, I was out of my depth. I'm I'm not, you know, prepared, I don't think, to approve a comprehensive change to the front page. Um, and it and, you know,
Oh, you're muted, Matthew.
Sorry, I don't know what happened there. I think the cat walked on the spacebar. Um, at any rate, I I just, I do feel we need a comprehensive approach rather than like making small fixes. And to uh, to Diane's point about people not using it right, like what someone who who does this for a living or who's who's a professional can do is figure out ways. But no one's ever going to send you a survey. No one's ever going to give you feedback. No one's ever going to take training on a website. People don't expect that. What someone who's professional can do is figure out ways to get that information from measuring the traffic and analytics and and other and or maybe focus groups in order to properly design it for the audiences that we want.
Okay, so, because that when we did our goal setting last year, one of our goals was the website to update it. So it would have been helpful to have what Diane just was put together in February brought back to the full board so that we could have a discussion about it, since that was one of our goals um collectively, and just decide as a board how we want to move forward. Um, with that, I liked a lot of those changes, with a lot of line with some of the things that I presented um here tonight. So, I mean, I think you know, it would, those simple changes, I think, would make a big difference um overall. I think as far as analytics and things like that, there's got to be whoever hosts our website must be able to run all that information um with a click of a button. They should have all that information already, I would think. Um, but, you know, back to the original um reason for bringing this to the board tonight was just talking about the Economic Development Committee. What can we do now? What changes can we make now um to help that group? Because we've got three new members that have come forward. Um, and there was, it was really a great discussion, I thought, the last meeting. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Chuck, but um Diane, I appreciate the work that you you did with Nancy and Matthew um for those proposed and Mark for those proposed changes, I think, would really be helpful um to the public, just based on feedback that that we've heard. So as far as getting employees to update their pages and things like that, you know, I clearly don't have an answer to that um piece of it, but I think there that there are changes we can make that will make a difference. Go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, so just just to address the the fact that people aren't stepping up and updating their own pages, I mean, I frankly, if I were Department Head for the town, pick a department, I I'm pretty sure I wouldn't be able to, I I understand that there was training that was done, but it's just not the number one priority, and it's probably not something that I would have embraced. And if you don't use it, you lose it. And, you know, so there's probably, you know, I'm gonna pick on Ed Mullin a little bit, you know, is is Ed Mullin knows everything there is to know about about mass building code and and uh building zoning and being a building commissioner, but um maybe maybe Ed does have this hidden talent for for maintaining a website, but I I I do think there is a systemic problem that we we need to take a look at. And there's a reason that people aren't signing up for the training and that kind of thing. To Anthony's point, you know, it's it, if it's part of people's um job description, and they're going to be evaluated on it, then they they should be stepping up and taking the training and trying to figure out how to do it and keep it more current, because it will, in fact, make their lives easier and make their uh the jobs more efficient and, you know, their employees happier, because they're not getting a lot of those phone calls saying, where do I find this? Where do I find that? If we're able to uh use the search function. That's the thing that frustrates me the most on the website, is you you try to search for something and it it seems to be quite a process to try to find something through the search function.
The the PDFs aren't weren't key words, that key, that the PDFs aren't searchable. That's the biggest problem. And that's another thing I've spoken
OCR, yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's a huge job as well.
Yeah.
I I would be, I would, I mean, I, let's make the changes that that Cindy's proposed. I think they're good changes and they're sensible. I, and let's talk about this at our next goal session and and decide on a on a clear path forward.
It definitely, it definitely needs to be addressed. It is a goal of ours. Um, I'm just not sure what the I'm not offering a whole lot of solutions, but I I think that's at least a path, Matthew. But I do think, I do think everything that you proposed tonight, Cindy, is it all makes sense, you know, and I think that if anybody put the kind of time and effort into it that you just did, um, we'd probably all be able to come up with some other other areas that we were looking at where some changes could be made. But there's got to be something more systemic that is keeping things more current.
Well, what about the the changes that Diane showed on that screen? How hard would it be to make those changes, Anthony?
Nancy can get working on that. It might take them, I don't know, a few weeks, I'm guessing, to to do all the changes, but we certainly can have an update on that.
Diane, did you want to add something?
So if I, if I may, um, Madam Chair, um, basically, it's just a matter of, Nancy has said it's a matter of getting the approval to do, make the changes as well. She's stated that um to the big, the other big change, which you're asking about, is not being able to search. That's an easy going back to the um to them and saying, we need the the website to be more searchable. There is a functionality that they can make that change. It may be a little bit of money, but it's doable. So we we did talk about that as well, so.
Matthew's throwing checks around. Maybe we can get him to write a check for uh
Well, I mean, obvi- obviously, everything's, everything's a cost, but the the changes that we're making here um that I've showed you is small money. And 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 the change, you know, the searchable is in is small money as well. I'm not sure the big changes that that Cindy has asked for. I don't know what that's going to be like, but
Okay.
I do, I do know that she does have a a price tag. I do, I don't have that with me, but.
Okay. All right, so maybe we can find out what the overall cost is going to be. Certainly, Mr. Knox.
One quick point, Matthew hit it on the head. The information's there. Sometimes you can't find it. It's this, it's the searchable part, and it's I see our website better than other towns, because I'm on a lot of times looking for real estate things. And searchable in all websites seems to be off. Not to mention any towns, but I went and tried to find a zoning map in one town. It took me over fifteen minutes to find it, and I did all those searches I possibly could. So I think that's the point. The information is there. It just has to be found.
Okay. Um, all right, Diane, so do you want to, should we get a cost on what these changes would, how much they would be? How much it would cost to make these changes and to make a decision from there?
So can we send what you, what the changes you want, or are we going to base it on what Nancy has has?
I mean, honestly, I think the changes that you proposed, Diane, are very similar to the changes that I proposed, with the exception of maybe some of the spelling, like spell out EDC, spell it out to Economic Development Committee.
Yeah.
Um, and just I, but I think the way I proposed to rearrange things is very similar to what you had already proposed.
Okay.
So I think we should go with what you proposed. Um, it just
At least for now, it's it's a step, right?
Yeah, let's take that step, since, you know, you worked with Nancy and Matthew on that. Um, let's take that step first. Okay, makes sense to me.
All right, so I will get with Nancy tomorrow. Tell her to make those, you you, are you going to authorize her to do it? Or or to get a dollar figure?
Do it.
Just do it. Yeah. Do we, do we need to vote? Do you know, we, do we need to vote on that?
I have a certain dollar amount. I have the authorization spent, so I'm good. We can make those changes. It'll happen.
Yeah. It's probably covered in the, in, in, in her operational budget for, uh, maintenance of the website.
Right.
Okay. All right. Good. Great. Anything else? Great. Thank you, Diane.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Good night.
Thank you too. Um, okay. So now we are on to annual town meeting warrant for June 12th, 2021. Voter petition article declare Littleton a pollinator friendly community.
I'm not sure. And I don't know if I'm saying our name right. Is Kedro Walsh? Um, somebody's raising their hand.
It's, I'm just going to say my name is Kedro Walsh.
Kay Johnson. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening. So you have a voter petition?
That's correct.
You're presenting to the, okay. Do you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Um, so, uh, and I, I did, uh, I have a very short slideshow that I can show also if that would be helpful. Um, we'll always share a little bit about this. Sure. Okay. Uh, it's submitted right now. Um, if that wants to go up. Should I just?
I'll, I'll share my screen.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, as, as most of you probably know already, bees and other beneficial pollinators are disappearing at alarming rates. Um, although scientific research shows that the continued use of systemic pesticides is a leading contributor. Uh, bees are also suffering from a lack of forage area and habitat. By making simple choices such as choosing to plant pollinator friendly plants, we can help in addressing this crisis. Um, and just, you know, to put in perspective, four different bumblebee species have declined by ninety-six percent in the last twenty years. The number of managed honeybee colonies in the U.S. has dropped from roughly six million in nineteen forty-seven to less than two point five million today. Um, and one in three, um, bites of our food is responsible for pollin- for, is responsible for pollination of, um, of key crops, including fruit, nut, berries, melons, many others, which contribute twenty billion dollar worth of services to U.S. agriculture. Um, additionally, most pollinator, most pollinators, so, um, moths, bees, um, et cetera, are keystone species that are also critical to ecosystems, critical for bird food. Um, if you want to go to the next slide. So neonicotinoids, um, are uh, referred to often as neonics. They're one of the most commonly used pesticides which are linked to pollinator decline. They're systemic, meaning that the plant exposed to the chemicals takes them up into the whole plant and insects cannot avoid them. Uh, they kill and impair the survival of pollinators like honeybees, wild bees, butterflies, um, and can also impact beneficial insects, birds and, and other non-insect species. A few weeks ago, the state's pesticides subcommittee just voted to ban residential sales of neonics starting next year. But, uh, this excludes licensed applicator use. Um, and also there will be no updating in continuing education courses for licensed applicators to inform them um, that these are considered now toxic to pollinators. So this means that uh, chemicals such as neonics are likely to continue to be in use, um, both uh, at the municipal level and on the residential level, um, by people who hire, say, Bane Pest Control or, um, lawn fertilization companies. Uh, neonicotinoid pesticides are acutely toxic to bees, but other pesticides are contributing to pollinator decline and are toxic to the environment as well. Um, next slide. Um, so according to the National Academy of Sciences, one in seven people are negatively impacted by lawn pesticides exposure because it's linked to asthma, allergies, cancer, kidney damage, birth defects and other long-term diseases. Children are especially at risk and considered a frontline community to exposure uh, because their brains and bodies are developing and are vulnerable to exposure and effects. Uh, so not only do, you know, chemicals that we use, uh, pose a great risk to bees and butterflies, they also can leach into soil and groundwater and surrounding areas, um, of, of water bodies. Um, the vast majority of pesticide products registered for use by the EPA and our state governments have not been fully tested for the full range of human health effects. Uh, the CDC says that children ages six to eleven nationwide have significantly higher levels of pesticide residue in their bodies than all other age categories. And the American Academy of Pediatrics says that children encounter pesticides daily and have unique susceptibilities to their potential toxicity. Uh, acute poisoning risks are clear and understanding of, of chronic health implications from both acute and chronic exposures are emerging. Um, so uh, next slide. So with all of that in mind, uh, here is a non-comprehensive list of leaders in the Commonwealth. Uh, with more and more research coming out on the negative impacts of neonicotinoids, glyphosate and other syn- that systemic and synthetic pesticides on pollinators, people and the planet. Uh, there's been public demand for action to restrict their use, um, or to encourage, um, alternatives. So on the left, and again, this is not a comprehensive list, uh, there are more towns in Massachusetts that um, are making decisions. But on the left, the towns with pollinator resolutions, you can see, um, you know, I, I think this highlights here, you know, it ranges from Bridgewater, which is an urban environment to Williamstown, North Adams, um, Lexington, Amherst. Uh, so we have communities that in some ways look similar to Littleton and others that look wildly different. And then on the right-hand side, uh, there are towns with pesticides reforms and these are different than what is being proposed here. The pesticide reforms are actual legislation that are restricting pesticides use, um, and incorporating both human health and environmental impact statements. Um, so next slide. Um, and so this is just an example. I wanted to put on this slide and the next slide. Uh, with more and more research coming out on the negative impacts of neonics and so forth, um, you know, there are promotion efforts that our community can take on. And here is an example, um, on the right-hand side in the middle there, you also have a photograph from a specifically native plant pollinator habitat in North Hampton. Um, and you know, Littleton has already begun to implement land care practices that are pollinator friendly, such as the water departments plan to incorporate pollinator habitat at the soon-to-be former Whitcomb well. Uh, the Littleton Community Farm plans to plant a lot of flowers that are specific to pollinators and run, uh, educational programs in conjunction to that. The garden club donated a large amount of native pollinator friendly flowers for an Eagle Scout project. Um, and they also just had their annual plant sale, uh, which had twenty-five percent native pollinating plants and they ran out of them within um, the first couple of, I think the first hour or two of their sale. Um, they also at their plant sale did a lot of promotion of pesticides reduction, pollinator, um, pollinator planting and, um, and, uh, native plants. So, you know, this resolution that we're looking at is based on that column on the left-hand side that, uh, I, I showed on the last slide of other towns in the Commonwealth that are trying to unify these steps as well as set the intention to continue with these practices, to raise public awareness and to phase out the use of, um, toxic neonics, um, on municipal land. And you can go to the next slide also and you'll see another, um, awareness you know, brochure and more habitat that was planted, um, in Western Mass. Um, so you know, this is, you know, kind of public education there and they're saying things like if you, if, if residents cut their mowing schedule in half, for example, so attempting to change the public perception on our landscapes and provide leadership from our municipal level, from a municipal level, as well as from different organizational bodies in town that are already doing this, but lack a common platform. So uh, I think you have a copy of the, um, of the resolution as well, but that's, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions as well. We may have a few other people on here as well that could raise their hands.
Are there any questions or comments from the board on this?
I hope we support it. I'm fully in favor.
Okay. Um, thank you for that presentation. It's certainly, um, I found it very interesting and enlightening and important. So, um, what action do we need from the board, Anthony? It's, it's a voter petition, so it's going to be inserted onto the warrant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You want a motion, Madam Chair?
Uh, certainly.
Do you have anything, Joe, you have any comments for it? Good. We'll let the select board vote to place the voter petition article, making a non-binding resolution declaring Littleton a pollinator friendly community on the June 12th, 2021 annual and special town meeting warrants and direct the preparation of motions to be moved and seconded by the petitioners.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck DeCoste's eye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written. I don't believe that Paul's on the call anymore.
Thank you, Kedro.
He's gone. Thank you, Kedro.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Article twenty-three, adjusted income and asset limits for tax abatements.
All right. We're going to bring back town council for this. Madam Chair, so what, uh, in your packet, there is a correspondence from town council which indicated the, um, in order to adopt forty-one C and a half, which is certainly with the board, uh, wanted to go in that direction, but that would require a ballot vote. Um, so there is a way and, and we asked Tom to be here to further explain it, how the very least, if we adopt forty-one D, you still could take advantage of the forty-one C and a half and Tom can explain how that can still happen, um, until we're able to, um, go through the process of adopting forty-one C and a half through the ballot. Tom?
Sure. Hello, everybody. Um, so I, I think you have in your packet, an email I sent on the adoption of forty-one D versus forty-one C and a half. And as Anthony correctly points out, um, but I, I think forty-one C and a half is the only, um, tax exemption that needs to be adopted at the ballot. And it's, and I would say further that it needs to be adopted at the annual ballot. So we've, we've, um, our, our direction was to, uh, come up with a solution to, um, kind of make up the difference. And so we have two options before you. I'm going to start with the second option first, which is we could schedule a special election at the end of June and, um, see if we get the vote to adopt forty-one C and a half. If we do, we would then have an additional article on the warrant that would allow us to um, file special legislation to have the legislature treat our special election vote as a general election vote. I mean, I think we have a reasonable chance of success on this, but it certainly comes with no guarantees. Um, and option one might be the better option. So under option one, we'd be looking to have the, uh, board place on the warrant the exception of clause forty-one D. So the difference between forty-one D and forty-one C and a half, they're both property exemptions for seniors. The difference is that forty-one C and a half allows a little bigger exemption for uh, I would say not significantly, but for more homeowners. So part of forty-one D is you, you know, they look at the value of your home and, and you know, your income to determine the exemption. Forty-one C and a half is a little more liberal uh, in that, um, exemptions are set by DOR and you don't necessarily have to look at the value of someone's home. It's more about the income they're making. So the idea here would be to get halfway there with forty-one D. And to get the rest of the way there through a, a program that I've recently discussed with COA and the Affordable Housing Trust, or at least with Marin, who's going to bring it to the Affordable Housing Trust. And that's a, a, it's kind of a mortgage assistance program for, uh, people in need. And so if we, if we can identify, and I think we can, the, you know, those property owners that would have been able to take advantage of forty-one C and a half, but can't take advantage of forty-one D. And I don't think there'll be a lot of them, but I think there'll be a few. If we identify them and reach out to them and have them come to the Affordable Housing Trust to apply for mortgage assistance, I think we could give them assistance to pay their mortgage in the same amount of exemption they would have received under forty-one C and a half. You know, thus at least for one year, kind of making those that may suffer from, from, um, our failure to put forty-one C on the ballot this year, make them hold for one year and then we can put it on the ballot next year. So it's a little bit of a dance, but I think it would work, um, if the, if the board has some flexibility.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. So I don't know that the age group that we're trying to help has, a lot of them don't have a mortgage on their house anymore. It's really that they're looking for relief from the real estate taxes, property taxes. So I mean, I like the idea, you know, Matthew sits on the Affordable Housing Trust with me. Um, we have talked about mortgages assistance, but it was, I think more along the lines of like first time home buyers and things like that. Hadn't thought about it for assisting our senior population, but I think a lot of them, their houses are paid for. I don't know. I mean, there might be some that have, um, still have mortgages, but I think getting them to come forward and apply for a program like that's going to be really difficult. I don't think they, you know, I don't know that we would reach the number of people that we would under forty-one C and a half. Um, but I understand the, the limitations that we're facing with respect to bringing forward forty-one C and a half. So um, do we know what the difference is between the forty-one D and the forty-one C and a half as far as how many people we might be able to help? I mean, Kathy Miller had brought out, you know, maybe about ninety residents in Littleton. Was it ninety? Would be, um, could be helped by the forty-one C and a half. Do we have any idea how many residents it might be with the forty-one D?
I don't. But I would bet, I, I would bet it's the lion's share of that money, of that number. You know, it might not get all the way to ninety, but I bet you it's in the seventy to seventy-five range.
Okay.
I, and I can, you know, work with Anthony and Joe and double check and get that information.
Right. I mean, we want to do something. Um, you know, we want to, we wanted, we want to do something more than that what we're doing now. Um, is the bottom line. So whatever that looks like, however, we can get there and, and the most that we can do now is really, I think, the objective of the board with this initiative. Um, I, I don't know. And I know Matthew had his hand raised. I don't, I don't know that the mortgage assistance is going to be helpful, but what are your thoughts on that, Matthew?
Um, my question for you was, do you feel like there's anything else the Affordable Housing Trust can do to, can we actually reimburse for, for taxes instead of helping them pay the mortgage? That might be a legal question. I don't know.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, it's an interesting question, Matthew, because I think you do have some flexibility on the Affordable Housing Trust. I know you can. I know you can um, assist with rental payments or mortgage payments. Whether or not I, you, we can add tax payments to that, I don't know, but let me get you an answer on that.
Thank you. And then I have, I, I would advocate for option one just because I think trying to set up as the election and going through the legislature is going to be more um, work than it's worth. Uh, what I would ask is, would it be a burden to the assessor's office to identify the people who need to apply for this um, COVID money? And would it be a burden for EHS? Because I know that they're going to need to assist many of those people in applying. Um, so I wa, I would want to find out and make sure that there's no administrative problems with that before we say yes to it.
Well, would they would have, for the first option, for the 41D?
But yeah, option one, where we do 41D this year, but then try to get people who, um, get people an additional like relief for the difference between D and C and a half.
Yeah, that would be through the assessor's office, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I, so I, and I don't like to speak for them, but if, you know, if the assessors were able to come up with those parties that we could help through 41C and a half, it's a similar calculation to figure out who's eligible for 41D and then we just look at the delta between the two.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Chuck, what are your thoughts?
And just a question, when, when Matthew was asking if you could use some of the Affordable Housing Trust and Tom, Tom answered relative to rent and um, mortgage assistance, I think, but is there anyone to set up like a grants program where we could be the, the? No. Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, it's uh, it's public money and so there's very specific and few avenues to.
Okay.
Maybe some bags of money could just fall off a truck or something.
Hate when that happens. All right. So what do we want to do? What's the favor of the board? We'll go forward with the?
With the path least resistance is option one. Just do, do the, do the best for the most that we can right now with the eye on the prize of, of uh, doing more later.
Okay. That sounds good. Joe, what are your thoughts?
Same thought.
Okay. All right, good. That's what we'll do. Um, and do you want to take things out of order while we have Tom here?
It's a good idea.
And talk about Cooper? The acquisition?
So I think we're looking for a vote under option one. So it would be, essentially you're going to vote to add. Um, uh, and this may be in your packet, but.
It is. I got it.
You got it?
Give that motion, yeah.
Okay.
Move, option one, move to reopen the annual town meeting warrant. Move to amend Article 23 to seek acceptance of clause 41D, move to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. That was a lot we didn't expect.
Do we want to close the warrant? Okay.
You do.
All right. Our motions have been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as dictated by Mr. DeCoste. So we are on, so now we can move up, we'll take it out of order. We'll move on to item nine B, the acquisition of property Cooper Farmhouse. Host community agreement. Anthony?
Yeah, you want to say that? Sure. So, um, Mattia, this, what we're looking for here is uh, is actually amending the original HCA that was done uh, quite a number of years ago, I think maybe signed back in 2016. Um, which at that time, the board, part of that HCA was that we would be, um, receive the deed for that farmhouse on, um, that's, that was part of the Cooper Farm development. Um, recently had some conversations through council with the fields and their attorney as far as them um, amending that where they would actually um, gift the town a sum of, um, a sum of monies that uh, in lieu of us having the house, they would be essentially be buying the house. But that, but that sale would actually be a gift uh, to whatever the town that, whether the board would like, rather than the HCA or, or something else. But um, so uh, in executive session, I think that the board has decided to move forward with that. So Town Council is here, um, to blow over any of the details or answer any other questions that the board may have before you take a vote.
And if I could just jump in, so it's, so technically, um, the original host community agreement instructed the fields to convey to us parcel A, the farmhouse. But that transaction has not yet been completed, so we don't own it. Um, so this is not a, this is not a real estate transaction. This is an amendment to the HCA. But so we're going to amend the HCA to now say they're going to give us an, an additional amount of money, but they no longer are required to convey to us parcel A, the farmhouse.
Okay. All right. Any questions, additional questions for Tom about this? No. Okay.
Tom, did you send a motion? Or Anthony, do you have a motion?
Tom, did you send, do you have it? No.
I have, I have it in my email. I can read it if you'd like.
Please.
Um, oh, sorry. No, that's the HCA change.
Yeah, that's what just to do.
Nope, sorry. I guess I don't have it.
Okay. So let me, uh, let me do it. So, um, I did send you an updated amendment to the host community agreement.
Right.
Um, with the understanding that the money, which is $350,000 will be um, received for the exclusive use of the Littleton Affordable Housing Trust. So if you're comfortable with that final change, then the motion would be that the board vote to amend the host community agreement um, uh, concerning the Cooper Farms estate by signing an amendment to that host community agreement that is before the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as dictated by Mr. Harrington. Um, all right, good. So we're all set on that. Do we, did we have anything else with Tom tonight?
No, I think that's, that's it for Tom. So thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Bye bye.
Bye. And so now we are to determine the order in which articles were appear. Direct posting.
Yes. Mattia, so I'll pop up a slide just to really look at the um, show you a list of the articles. Not sure if you wanted to switch any around. That says that currently um, are in the draft of the uh, town meeting report and town meeting warrant. So the board would like to make any changes. We certainly can at this point in time. If not, we could move forward the way that they are presented.
Is it best that we get this done tonight, Anthony?
Well, this is our last meeting, Chuck. So uh, it goes to the printer next Tuesday. Unless, unless the board wants to uh, have another meeting where you can adopt recommendations next week, we can just do this one issue at 6:30 where you can have a chance and I'll look at this list. Um, and then uh, Selectman Glavy could be here to do recommendations. Clearly you don't have to do recommendations, but if you wanted them printed in the book, they would either have to be done tonight or we would have to reconvene a meeting next week for this purpose, so we can then include it. You don't have to do them all too. You could, you could still hold off some and um, and for further discussions and make them on the, just before the town meeting, you can make those motions. Uh, the recommendation, recommendations from the board, excuse me.
So we're going to take off the personnel bylaw amendment.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, let, let's um, let's decide on the order and then go through these when Paul is here to do assignments. Next week.
Yeah, we need Paul here for that discussion.
It's not just the assignments, it's the recommendations.
Record whether or not we are in support of it or not, yeah.
Oh, I see. It has to go in the warrant. That, that has to go in the warrant too, doesn't it?
It has to go in the report, right, if you want it. If you want your recommendations in there, which I would imagine some of them that you would. Um, so it's either doing tonight, unfortunately, Selectman Glavy wouldn't be here. Um, or we could do a quick 6:30 next Monday for this purpose and maybe get out by seven, just run through the articles. So whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I'd say 6:30.
Yeah, I'd rather have Paul here.
Gives us an opportunity to look at them too.
Yeah. Let's do that. So, yeah, so we'll tackle this next Monday at 6:30, Anthony.
We'll set up a special meeting for that purpose and this will be on it, the
Yep.
uh, renumbering and recommendations and then we'll be wrapped up. So we'll forward to the latest edition as we make the, uh, when we take off, uh, the personnel board and uh, we'll make those changes and send you out a clean version. Hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow or anything that we could have that done for you.
Okay. Great, great. All right, good. So now we're on to, um, so that takes care of items eight, C and D. We're going to revisit that next week. And now we have Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator update, the update on the Neshoba Valley Regional Vax, Vaccine Clinic.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we lost Chief Wazinski, who wanted to stay on tonight, but just uh, to talk about this, but um.
Monday night?
No, I, I, you know, I can give an update quick just so we, just as we need to stick to business on Monday night. But um, again, I think I mentioned it to the board in a, an email, but we, the state approved on uh, vaccine um, uh, clinic at Devon's. And this is a collaboration of the 14 communities that are in Neshoba towards the help um, represents. So this is going to be held at the Clear Path for Veterans New England Building at 84 Antietam Street, Devon's. Sorry, it's like Chuck's smile. Did I butcher, did I butcher that, Chuck?
No, you nailed it.
Thanks. Um, that's going to start on May 12th and each community will, will um, uh, aid by uh, providing some EMT and paramedics to do vaccinations. And uh, Chief Wazinski has been involved in some of the more detailed meetings with that. Uh, this is great. It's, it's another um, opportunity to have a clinic closer to where people live. Um, I still wish it was done about three months ago, but that, that's a whole part of Resident Bridge at this point. It, they'll still be have to use the state website in order to sign up for the vaccination. Uh, so that, that doesn't change. It's just another option to be closer to home. Um, certainly with more CVSs offering it and Walgreens. Um, there's certainly a lot more options that are available today to the residents than there were months ago. So, um, just another regional clinic that uh, we're finally proud of. And um, it's been a long work and banking, I'd like to thank our uh, state delegation and played a big part in helping really wake the DPA up to uh, the opportunity that we have before us. So um, it's great work by everybody involved.
Excellent. Good stuff. Thank you, Anthony. I know you've worked hard on that as well. So thank you for your efforts.
My pleasure.
So now we're on to, um, we've taken care of everything else. Cooper Farmhouse. And now we're on to approve the minutes of April 26, 2021. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Were there any questions or comments? Ready, ready for motion?
Will the select board vote to approve the regular session meeting minutes of April 26, 2021?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck's aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The minutes of April 26, 2021 are approved. Um, so that concludes our meeting for this evening. We're going to have a special meeting next Monday just to um, determine the order of articles and vote on articles that we support. And then after that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 24th of May.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck's aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
C.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. And that.